We will call this meeting to order. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine.
President.
Jenny Walgast.
President.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Chuck Melkey.
Here.
Kim Winter.
Here.
Ken Engel.
President.
Andrea Fick is absent.
Yes. Thank you, Sue. Before we begin, I want to let everyone know that Andrea sends her apologies for not being able to join us tonight. This meeting was not a meeting on our calendar, and when she asked the people who called the meeting to delay it until next week, she was refused. And the reason she's not here sadly is because she's supporting a friend whose son was murdered, and his trial, the trial of his murderer is this week. So we send our prayers to the family of Andrea's friends and wish that she could be here. She wishes she could be. It's also her birthday. So anyway, just wanted to let everybody know that. And I'm really disappointed that there wasn't some flexibility provided to her, given the situation. All right, with that, I would ask everybody to join us in the pledge. All right. I'm going to ask whomever put the agenda together to address item number four, which is the board member review.
That was me. And in reference to not rescheduling it, Andrea and I had a lengthy conversation about it. She wasn't sure that she couldn't make it. Most trials are done by four to five in the afternoon, and she was about 45 minutes away. So I don't know what went on after today's events, but she did think she could make it or not. So that's why it wasn't, again, kick the can down the road till next week. I do have a question before we get started. What are all these documents that's been put in front of us from Trune and Trune and Delaporte? What are these?
We were asked to provide contracts, prospectus, the rate, the rates, so that's all.
Okay. They don't have much to do with tonight, correct?
I'm not sure what tonight is about, so I was asked to provide these documents, so that's why I print them all for you.
I don't see a contract.
Yes, we don't have a contract with Delaporte.
Yeah.
We have a prospectus, and we just have a retainer rate with Trune.
Okay.
Board member, board member reviewing what the meeting was called for is, a few weeks ago, we had an investigation that was done against one of the board members. I think we all come to the conclusion it wasn't handled the greatest for many different reasons. Last Thursday or Friday, we received, Chuck Melkey received a document from Delaporte and Lynch. I'm sure none of you have it. But it was basically explaining some things that he had possibly done wrong or was doing wrong from something as simple as mispronouncing someone's name. And in the process of, when you watched the board tape, he's rattling off Mr. So-and-so, Mr. So-and-so, and Mr. So-and-so, where the third one should have been a Mrs. I don't know that that's attempting to misgender somebody. I think that's simply an error while talking and being excited about something. So one of my questions I had with this was, when we did the investigation with Ms. Henry, we used Trune Law Firm to do the investigation, who represents the district and the board. And I don't believe they should have been the party to do that. I think we should have found an outside attorney or maybe Trune should have said, hey, why don't you try using this law firm to do your investigation as we represent you? Which really left Ms. Henry with no representation when she went and got interviewed by Trune Law Firm. The district didn't offer her Mr. Delaporte, nor did they offer another attorney firm we use. So I don't guess we really represented the board or a board member. Same thing with this. Mr. Melkey has a timeline to respond. It's kind of unclear where this is coming from. It doesn't identify the party, which I don't really have a problem with that, but it doesn't even identify what the actual act was. It makes you read between the lines. You mind if I read a couple of those, Chuck, or would you rather I did not? Number one, public statements contributing to a negative publicity complaint. What do you do? I have no idea. Reference to personal background unrelated board business. Actions alleged to create a hostile and harassing work environment such as raising personal matters publicly, directing staff outside the chain of command, and engaging in disruptive meeting conduct, yelling, pounding the table, and interrupting speakers. I'm not going to say Chuck has never had, but during public comment, I don't think Chuck has ever interrupted anybody. He has interrupted people that have spoke out of turn, not during public comments. And I think what most people sometimes fail to understand is this is a meeting of the board. It's our meeting. It has to be dealt with in public. It is for you to come view, not necessarily for you to partake in at your leisure. That's why there's public comment. You can come and say anything you like. Reference to your personal background and possession of a sidearm on school property, thus creating atmosphere and intimidation. I don't know of any time, and every one of these meetings are videoed. I don't think we've ever saw Mr. Melkey stand up and flash or threaten a sidearm. So you're left reading between the lines, and then it goes into what it would like Mr. Melkey to do. And it quotes some board policies that he may have violated, and one of those are wrong. It should be 4104. It's put down as 1404, which there's not one. I had called earlier in the week and asked about another letter like this that was sent out to one of you folks, not us. And I found out that that document was created and sent out for free. So I'm going to go back to how I started my conversation with Mrs. Henry. When I talked about a witch hunt, that's what this is here. So we come down to some things that you guys may want to know. We have a policy on how to handle grievance procedure within our board policies, anti-harassment. These are the ones that are listed on here. We've had no grievances come to the board. Many of you, I look out there, you've been to all the meetings. Have you seen any grievances come to the board? Because we would have to solve them in public. Okay. As long as we're all keeping off. Anti-harassment. Now, I mean, I guess if he's being accused of harassment, that's our policy. And then 4104, employment complaint procedure allegations implicating civil rights. If you're going to say that someone may have had their civil rights violated, whoever's making this complaint, we don't know. I don't know that any of those things that were expressed constitutes anyone's civil rights.
Can I interject just for one second? If you, in that policy about the grievance procedure, it does state that, so notice of allegations upon receiving a complaint, the applicable coordinator will notify the parties. So the coordinator will notify the parties of the following. The procedure and any informal resolution process. So I don't believe he was notified that there was some kind of informal process that could be followed. Sufficient information available at the time to allow the parties to respond to the allegations, including the identities of the parties involved in the incidents, the conduct alleged to constitute unlawful discrimination, and the dates and locations of the alleged incidents. So I don't believe, I believe that the notice that was provided to Mr. Melkey was missing this important part of the grievance process. So I just want to interject that as well.
Thank you. Again, not following our policy. And then we go to who can actually initiate these things against a board member, and that would be the board president. And it says, accept complaints, coordinate, investigate into allegations of misconduct against other board members or the superintendent, including placing the superintendent on a non-disciplinary paid leave during the investigation. And number seven is contact legal counsel on the board's behalf to authorize individual board member to contact legal counsel. All these things were never afforded by either Mrs. Henry or Mr. Melkey by our board or our board president. And obviously, I read you these. What was done? So we're, I'm sorry, Chuck. Oh, did I apologize? What I skipped?
Number four.
I apologize. I'll read it.
Number four.
I'll read, I'm sorry. Statements and conduct in board and committee meetings, including comments perceived as sexist, racist, or otherwise discriminatory, as well as misgendering or mispronouncing the complainant's name. That one Chuck was able to figure out. He did say someone was a mister instead of a missus. I would, like, once, once. I don't think that would be misgendering. I think that would be an error on his part. But that's just, that's just my opinion. So we're back to where we started a few weeks ago. And I don't know how we do anything with the behavior of what's going on with our board president. And I have to assume that she initiated it, okay, these. I don't know that. I know she did, and she acknowledged she did Ms. Henry's. I don't know who did Chuck's. And I'll give you a second, in just a second, Carrie. I'm more unhappy to let you talk. But we're not doing things properly. You can read our own policies. We're not following them. And we are having our attorneys threatening or doing investigations on us that we should probably have a third party. That's what we just did at the last board meeting, to do our investigations. We found someone that none of us know, don't work for us, don't work with us, have never done anything to do an investigation. I don't, you know, I asked Phil from Trune over another topic. I said, do you represent the board? Yes. Well, then who represented Autumn while you're questioning her? I asked Jim about another matter on the other letter that was written, and I asked, referenced Mr. Delaporte. Jim responded, his loyalty is to the board. Yet he generated a document attacking and chastising or pointing out his wrongdoings. Pick your way of describing it. But that's the loyalty to the board. Again, why not find a third party to do that? Not someone that we're paying to represent the district and ourselves. So we're back to the same topic that we were at a few weeks ago. And if you wanted to respond to any of that, Carrie, please do.
So we received a complaint, a serious complaint. And we received a serious complaint that must be taken seriously. And as is my responsibility and right, I asked Mr. Delaporte, who is an expert in school employment law, in addition to many other things, to initiate the investigation. And as a representative of the board and very knowledgeable in matters pertaining to our employees. Dave, was there anything else you wanted to mention? Okay. No?
I would just add that I think it initially got forwarded to me as the Title IX coordinator for the district. And I'm the one that, I mean, it may have gotten forwarded to you initially, then forwarded to me because I was the coordinator. And because it was dealing with a board member, it was my request to have it escalated to legal, because I can't investigate board members.
Was an informal investigation offered? Because that's another avenue, and that, it seems like that should be offered first.
What I did is, I just immediately, the request was sent to me, and I said, I don't think I'm supposed to be the one doing this. And I moved it. So that was where
Yeah, because the grievance, I mean, the first step is to try to handle it informally without involving lawyers. Get the parties involved, discuss it, and see if you can come to an informal agreement, resolution for it. And then if that's unsuccessful, then obviously fill out this grievance process, including notifying the person being accused of this, the specific allegations.
Yeah, what I'm saying is
That's a very glaring omission from the letter that was sent, because there's no way that Mr. Melkey's able to respond without knowing what he's even being specifically accused of, dates, people, specifics.
If I missed a step, I missed a step. What I'm telling you is what I did.
Okay.
But again, we're not following our board policies. It's just continued. Every time we turn around, we're not following our board policies. And I don't know, I don't know where, I don't know where your responsibility comes in following the board policies, but
I think I thought I was following the policy. I didn't think that I had the scope to be able to conduct any portion of that in my role, because I'm here to deal with the employees.
So maybe that should have been your first question to the attorney. Did you ask the attorney that question? If you didn't know
That was, that was part of me submitting it back.
Submitting it back? What does that mean?
Back up to Jim and saying, I think we need to get legal counsel on this. And that's where, that's where my involvement with this stopped. So that's what I'm saying. I shifted it back because I said, I don't think I'm supposed to be the one dealing with this.
Okay, so then, why aren't, why, I guess we'll go to Jim now. Again, why aren't we following our board policies? Somebody had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Delaporte about this. And we named the policies in here. Did anyone take the time to actually read those and think, should we do blah, 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 blah first?
Mr. Delaporte is here if you want to ask him about our policy.
I don't.
Well, we feel like we follow policy.
Okay. But obviously, when you read the policy aloud, we immediately skipped a possible step, correct?
I don't think we've missed a step. It's an investigation. I mean, it's not judge and jury. It's an investigation.
You couldn't have had the two parties talk about this?
I'm not the other party, so the other party felt like they needed to file harassment. They did.
Well, we sit, we sit and we make students sit in a room with each other that have been bullying and arguing and fighting and everything else, and we make them sit in a principal's office and try to iron things out. But when it comes to us, we immediately hire an attorney and come out with both barrels blazing against the board member. So we don't even use the same logic at this level with adults that we try to shove down children's throats.
And Ken, you may not want to hear from Mr. Delaporte, but I'm going to ask him if he can join us or if he can answer from there.
Would the board like me up there or from back here?
You can speak from back there.
Thank you. And I'm going to try to answer, I'm going to try to answer all the questions that were, or all the points that were raised. I apologize if I missed one. The, there can be an informal process. The law that exists as it applies to whether it be Title IX, Title VII, et cetera, does require that to be at the choice of the complainant, not the choice of the respondent. And in this particular case, the complainant wanted a formal investigation.
Were they given the option? Like, were they informed of their choices?
Yes.
Or were they, okay, so they were informed that they were able to, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And I would love to have had a complaint that was more detailed. It actually slowed down the process a little bit to have to wait on some documents to even determine if this needed to go the Title IX route or the Title VII route. That makes a big difference as to how formal the process is. Title IX, unlike, for example, Title VII, has a very formalized process and requires both a fact finder and a decision maker, and they have to be separate people. And then you also have whoever is the coordinator. So it's a very complicated process. We had to make sure that that wasn't at play here. I would have liked to have sent more information with that letter. I sent what we had at the time. We are gathering documents. We are talking to people, and in the process of that, we are getting more specifics. As soon as we have them gathered up, we're going to provide them to the respondent, because it would be unfair for the respondent not to understand what they're being accused of. What we did was what was required by your policy to the best of our ability. We didn't have specific dates at the time. We just didn't.
So
We will have those dates before we speak with Mr. Melkey. We will provide them to him so that, let's say there are emails or other information that we need that, you know, may, that he could defend himself with, for example, we will give him the opportunity to gather those up.
So you initiating that process, though, starts a clock, right? So there's a 60-day clock? So by you notifying him of that before you had all the information, you are effectively reducing the amount of time he's able to defend himself, because you are starting the clock before you even have enough information for him to even begin a defense. Is that correct?
Well, first, the 60-day clock is a recommendation. It's not a requirement. If you read in your policy, you can actually extend that period as necessary.
But do both parties have to agree to that?
No. That's up to
Either part, so who determines whether that can be extended or not?
The investigator does.
So the investigator could potentially say, no, I believe 60 days was sufficient. And what recourse would the respondent have?
Well
Are they just out of luck?
Let me start with, this is a slightly odd situation, because the respondent in this particular case is not an employee. There are actually limited, there is a limited recourse for the board when it comes to a board member. There are things that the board can do, but they are limited, okay? Very limited. However, whether they're limited or not, the law requires that the board conduct, you know, follow the process essentially. And just because something is in a allegation or a complaint does not mean that, A, it is true or untrue, and it also doesn't mean that it has weight or no weight. If somebody makes a one-time mistake, you know, in, or while speaking quickly, happens to accidentally use the wrong, you know, surname or suffix, sorry, I think everybody can understand that. That doesn't mean that this is or isn't that case. We haven't gone that far along the process. We have to give the respondent an opportunity to respond. We have to talk to anybody who was a witness or a key witness and, you know, essentially gather information. What we're doing is what your board policy required. I don't set my own projects for you. You guys come to me and tell me what you want me to do, and I do it if it's, you know, consistent with policy and in the best interest of the board, because I do work for the board as a whole. Typically, the, if you are going to provide attorneys to either employees or a board member, it would not be somebody who worked for the Board of Education itself. It would be somebody from the outside, and the, if the board chose, the board could pay for that attorney, for the cost of that attorney. That's entirely up to the Board of Education.
So I was just going to ask you one more thing real quick, and then I'll ask your questions. So you had to have had a minimum threshold of information, evidence, or whatever, to feel that it was necessary to send this letter to Mr. Melkey, is that correct?
We have
Or you can just send the letter just because somebody just says, I don't like the way Chuck talked to me?
No, that's obviously, wouldn't be the case. What would, what you look at is whether the allegation, if true, would implicate one of the, either policies or the law itself, whether it be Title VII, Title VI, Title IX, whatever the case may be. So you don't, when you do that and you make that determination, that determination really is made by the board president with assistance of counsel. It is not whether it's true. It's not a indication that it's true. It is simply, if this was true, would this implicate a law that would require us to conduct an investigation and take some appropriate action?
Without specifics, how are you able to make that determination?
Yeah.
The complaint that we received had contained allegations that, if true, could implicate either your board policy, as we listed out, and I apologize for the typo, I must have had a second dyslexia there, but either your board policies or Title VII itself.
Okay. Coincidentally, you attended the meeting where Chuck misspoke. I just find that odd.
I was not aware.
So I don't know how this is non-bias and not targeted and not a witch hunt if this attorney sat in the very front row on the same day that all of these allegations were made. That was the 8/13 meeting, sorry, Kim.
Why was he even here? Because he just told us that he's only, we, you know, contact him if we need him to do something. Why was he even at that meeting?
Under 460, Board Policy 4601, the superintendent has the right to engage and work with your attorneys. I was asked to be here because there was a concern that the board may want their attorney here to answer questions. I was not a part of the property issue and therefore was, you know, as unbiased and as unconnected to that as I could be. And your leadership asked me to be here in case the board had any legal questions attached to that.
Where's the bill for that? Because Jim told me today that you did that on your own, that he didn't ask you to be here. So I would like to know where that invoice is because, no, of course not, because you told me today that he took it upon himself to show up to that meeting, that he wasn't directed by anyone to be here. And now he's telling me, no. I'm still talking and I'm still talking. And then he, yeah, sits here and says that you directed him.
He came here because of all the stuff that we were doing with Morris. He did not charge me. You asked if we were charged for that. I said we were not. You said, was there an invoice for that? I said there was not.
You said he came on his own.
Well, I don't understand what you're saying. He came to see what was happening. You asked me about an invoice on him.
Okay, but he said that you asked him, no, Jim. He just said that you asked him.
I asked him to come to that meeting.
Okay, but that's two different things. Either he just showed up or you asked him to come here.
She asked me about the invoice and how much we paid for that.
Yeah, I could have pulled it up.
That's what you asked.
That makes sense.
That's what you asked.
Okay.
Quick question. If he was asked to be here on the behalf of the board, if we had any questions about whatever could have arose, how many board members were aware that he was here to assist us that night?
I didn't know who he was.
Oh, everyone say yea or nay?
No.
He was in the front row and you talked to him and asked him questions that night?
I didn't know who he was.
I didn't. I never spoke to him. I didn't know why he was here. And then after the meeting, he stayed here for about another hour and a half. But again, none of us knew he was here to assist us.
Right.
He stayed here for several hours.
Well, right, but-
I want to bring up a point, Ken. He was here to counsel us, right? Sir, sir?
Yes.
I made a motion. And it was seconded by Ms. Henry. And the motion was never taken. Why didn't you counsel us on that? If you were here for counsel, that is a whole face. Once again, I'm gonna get myself in trouble. You were sitting right there. You're an attorney. I met you before one time. I asked Carrie why you were here. He was here to observe and advise. I reviewed the tape. You were obviously texting somebody during some heated conversation here. And Carrie kept looking at her phone. So I don't know if it was her or not.
Chuck, I don't ever text during a meeting. I'm going to go on record again. I do not text.
Are you gonna investigate her for interrupting me? Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure if you're gonna investigate her the same as I interrupt people. Because she just interrupted me. Number two is, okay, but you were clearly saying the tapes where you guys are making motions to each other when we were on a hot topic button. And I had a second from her to go into closed session to talk about potentially discipline or at least investigate it and go look at the tape. I love the tape. And you said, you can't do that without the employees here. You just butt in onto that one that I asked. And I said, well, the employees are here. Let's vote on it and then we can ask them. And you didn't advise us on that. If you're saying that, that was your duty then to advise us that. Does that, does anybody remember that? That's a mess. That was a direct violation of the Opens Meeting Act, sir. And you're an attorney. There, oh, I hit the desk again. God forgive, I pounded the desk and I talked loud.
To my knowledge, I did not see-
To my knowledge. Well, you can go back to the tape. I made the motion. It was seconded. She completely ignored us several times. I asked again. You sat there and you guys were talking, making faces to each other. It's clearly on the tape. And I asked about it and we couldn't even get the vote through. Our president violated potentially the Opens Meeting Act. Because the motion was on the floor. It was seconded and she passed it through. Look at the tape.
If you'd like an answer to that, I can answer it.
Well, I can investigate her.
That-
No, I would, because the vice president can ask for an investigation if the president's something wrong. So that's a violation of the law, potentially. Can you investigate that? I'm done. Thank you.
We can investigate. I don't recommend it because it would, it would get real expensive. But we can, we can investigate anything the board asks us to, okay? Or the board president, whoever that person is at the time. I work for you guys, not the other way around. Second, what you're raising there is a Roberts Rules issue and a internal policy issue, a governance issue, not a Open Meetings Act issue.
It's a parliamentary procedure. We don't follow Roberts Rules, sir, because I've asked to do it and they refuse to institute it. I want Roberts Rules so we have some control what's going on up here. And, but it is a parliamentary procedure. And when a proper motion's been made and it's been seconded, it should have been taken. You were sitting there and you guys were doing some verbal stuff. I couldn't tell because I don't see well or hear well. And you know what? It never went by. So that's a violation, a potential violation of the law. And we tend to break the law up here and we only selectively enforce what we want. And let me ask you one more question. If a board president decides to spend money to do an investigation, should that come to the full board first?
Not according to your policy.
Where does it say that in the policy?
It's in section 4601, and I actually happen to have it up, so I can read it to you.
Good.
If you give me half a second here.
So the board, the board president can do expenditures without authority of the board? Okay.
And I apologize, 4601 deals with the superintendent's right to engage your attorneys. I, the other one is in-
In routine business. That refers to routine business. It doesn't refer to investigations.
It does not limit itself to routine business. It does require that if the business is out of the ordinary, that, and against, you know, a policy or something like that, that the superintendent advise you of what's going on.
So he can investigate a board member? The employee can investigate one of the boss.
I did not say that. Your policy when it comes to investigations requires-
Yeah, it does. It's actually 2406. It's under the Board Officer's Duties. One of the duties of the president, number seven, is contact legal counsel on the board's behalf or authorize individual board members to contact legal counsel.
It doesn't say that she can hire him, though. It says that, read it, read it again, please.
Okay, yep, so it says, contact legal counsel on the board's behalf or authorize individual board members to contact legal counsel.
Right, okay.
It doesn't specifically say that she can hire an attorney to do an investigation.
Right.
You just read it. And then once again, we can talk lawyer talk. Where does it say that? Anything like that's gotta be board approved. That's a standard policy throughout the state of Michigan.
Well, it's not, unfortunately, a policy.
Unless it specifically says. And that does not specifically says.
I'm not indicating your policy is good or bad. I'm not taking a position on that. I'm just telling you that that's your policy. And your policies have to work together, which includes those that deal with allegations. And those policies, when it is a board member, requires that the board president make these decisions.
I don't, I don't get that from what she just read.
Which, which, which policy are you referring to to make that decision?
You have multiple policies. And I'm referring to your, for example, your harassment policy, your, your Title IX policy, et cetera. They all speak the same. And if it is the superintendent, if it's below the superintendent, then it's dealt with, you know, initiated by the Title IX coordinator, or, for example, I'll use Title IX, for example. The Title IX coordinator and the superintendent work together to get it done. If it is either the superintendent is the respondent or a board member, then it bumps it up to your board president. You guys are free to change that. You know, that's entirely up to the Board of Education. However, that's how your policies currently read.
So the policies just say that the, it goes to the coordinator. And it says, a complaint against one of the coordinators may be made to the superintendent or board president. A complaint, so this is 3115B designation of coordinators. So a complaint against the superintendent may be made to the board president. A complaint against the board president may be made to the board vice president. That's how it's supposed to go. So everything, including complaints about board members, are supposed to just go to the coordinator and the coordinator's listed as David Simonson. So those should be his determination.
That is not the policy that's at play here.
That's what we listed on the sheet.
So which policies at play then? Because that's, this is for the grievance.
If you look at your policies, and if you give me a second, I'll pull them up and I'll read the language. So you have to give me a second. Your policies aren't always easy to get to.
I just have one more question, sir. Do you mind? You were, you were here, while you're looking it up, you were here witnessing everything. So how are you an impartial investigator? Underneath the Michigan rules of professional conduct, when you become a potential witness and you no longer are an impartial investigator?
I was not aware that you misgendered anybody at that meeting. If you did, it passed right past me.
And that's why I happened to be talking to the public out there for about two hours after the deal. And then you sat here and Carrie's in heated conversation with you and Jim. I happened to see through the window and take pictures of it almost two hours later. So that's heated. You know, there was some, did you bill us for that legal counsel or that was all free?
Was the board- It was free. We know invoices this year. So thank you for free.
Mr. Melkey, if you think that I-
Hang on. Was any of that information shared? Like, we didn't, I didn't know that he was asked to be here on 8/13. Was any of the information of why he was here shared? What the conversation that lasted two hours after the meeting entailed?
And you know, I've accused some of the board members or board members too, and the superintendent of potentially wrongdoing. And to me, that's very suspicious that you would be here meeting within two hours. And then after last month's meeting, all of a sudden I get slapped with this investigation. I would like two hours of free time if you could come out to the office one day and help me out.
Mr. Dullaport, were you here for two hours after that meeting?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Okay, an hour and a half maybe?
No, and, and, yeah, yeah, you were.
If you were giving legal counsel to our president and our superintendent, then you should pass that on to the entire board.
I was introducing, I referred to my son.
Yes, he brought his, he brought his 16-year-old son, who I am familiar with because I worked with Mr. Dullaport very closely. On the tenure case last year, I was called in to the tenure case. That's how I knew Mr. Dullaport well. He spoke of his son very kindly and highly. And he brought his son to the meeting. And his son was just learning to drive and getting his license. And I was happy to meet him. He's a, he's a good kid, a good student. And that's what we were chatting about for probably five or 10 minutes. There you go.
What? No, absolutely not.
The meeting was over at 9:50. You were here at 10:39, so it's at least an hour.
This isn't unbiased, no. It's a proposal just made.
I, I was not here for two hours after.
My memory may be a little bit, I thought an hour, but it wasn't five or 10 minutes.
But the purpose for talking to Mr. Dullaport was to also meet his son.
Okay, I would like, Mr. Dullaport?
Unbiased.
Mr. Dullaport?
Yes.
It doesn't matter. They do the investigation. I don't care. This is-
I'd like to, I'd like to come back to the reason you were here. Some way, shape, or form, you and Jim spoke and you were invited to the meeting. Is that accurate? I mean, that's what you said. You said, you said Mr. Kitchen asked you to be here.
That is correct.
Okay, so some way you guys communicated to be, for you to be here that night?
Yes.
And I'm pretty sure you-
It was a telephone call.
That's fine. I don't care.
I was informed that there were some concerns regarding counsel that had been involved. And that's with no disrespect to counsel that was involved. I was just told that there may be some concerns and that I should come to the meeting in case the board needed advice that was separate from-
So the counsel that was involved, are you speaking to Trune Law Firm?
I don't know who all was involved, so-
Okay, so let me rephrase this. So if I told you that Trune Law Firm was representing us in that possible sale, that's what you were here for?
I was here to observe and be present to be able to advise the board if necessary.
He said on the Morris Road School, I'm sorry. He said on the Morris Roads.
Okay, well, none, none of us were aware what you were here for. So that was actually a very well-kept secret.
Yes.
That's, that's being funny. That's not sincere. But none of us knew why you were here.
I didn't know that Mr. Dullaport was going to join us.
And that's fine. And that's, and that's fine. But the point of it is, how would I know? The last time I spoke to Mr. Dullaport was probably 2013 or 14, okay? I didn't even know that he wasn't with Trune anymore. Until we, until we got a document that has his name up at the top of Lynch. Whoever Lynch is, I'm assuming it's your partner.
He was my partner at the time.
Okay, so my, my point being is, we didn't know why you were here.
I can't, I can't speak to that because I-
And I understand it. And Mrs. Henry don't even know who you are. How would she know to go, I'll be damned, there's our lawyer? She didn't know who you were. I mean, maybe someone would have said, hey, if you have any questions during our meeting, Mr. Dullaport's here to answer them.
That would have been helpful.
That's an amazing, it's amazing thought process and concept, but it would have been a neat idea for us to know that. I, I don't know, Kim, do you know Mr. Dullaport? Okay, but I mean, you at least know who he was sitting there. Okay.
Yeah, I have seen him before.
Okay. My point being is, I'm, I'm not gonna call anyone a liar. I don't know that that passes the smell test.
I would hope-
Hang on, can we put, can we jump back to the Trune thing? So he used to work for Trune, but we invited him because we couldn't trust Trune to tell us. Or we had whatever issues with the Trune counsel on the sale of Morris, but this ex-
He left Trune years ago. That's when I met him. He still, he was for Trune.
But Trune's our Morris Road thing, but they just said they called him here for the Morris Road. We have two attorneys.
I called him here for the dynamics that was taking place around that to watch it. And he chose to come. He chose to come.
So you must have a personal relationship with him. You asked him to come.
I worked a lot with him in our, last year with the teacher.
About this.
I will say, just for the record and for the public, I do think Mr. Dullaport's a very good attorney. I watched him do some stuff when I was on the board the first go-around. I do like him. I wouldn't want to sit across the table from him, but he, he's, I think he's a good attorney. So I'm not picking on you by any stretch. But do you understand where I'm coming from with this statement?
I understand your concern. I, I am not up to speed with all the dynamics that are going on. I apologize to the entire board for not being up to the dynamics. I understand that, if I'm correct, that you would both like your attorneys to be a little more active in advising the board during the board meeting and also that not everybody feels that they're on the same page. Do, am I correct?
Just letting us know what you were here for. And I want to go back to a question with Jenny. In reference to the timeline of the investigation, you never, you never really answered that question. So the meters, in, in reality, the meter's running right now, correct? And you still have not-
The meter is, on the investigation is not a hard meter. The investigation takes however long the investigation does. Your board policy recommends that it be done in 60 days. Sometimes that's easy to accomplish, sometimes not. It really depends on the scope and the amount of evidence.
And do you think at this point in time, without you going back and watching the video from August 13th, it may be a good idea that you recuse yourself? from August thirteenth, it may be a good idea that you recuse yourself from this for the fact that whether you would be a witness for the district or a witness for Mister Melky, that it's probably a good idea that that you and your firm remove yourself from this? Because you were sitting, you were sitting here and you obviously are a witness.
Let let me uh respond, if you don't mind it, in three ways. Number one, uh the video is the best evidence, uh so I'm not sure I would be much of a witness given that I didn't even notice a misgendering. Um, I just didn't. I I apologize. It must have gone right past me. Um, I suspect it went past most people uh who were sitting in the, in the uh audience. The um, that being said, if the board wants me to recuse myself and wants somebody else to conduct this investigation, I am more than happy to do so. I I, it's never particularly comfortable uh when a board member is involved, and I'm more than happy to uh pass that uh burden off if that's your choice. Um, I I don't believe that I'm biased in any way. I just didn't, whatever that one word out of an entire meeting, I didn't catch it.
And that's fine, but.
Until somebody said some, something here, I didn't even realize that that was the meeting that we, that this occurred at.
We, we'll, we'll change our policy.
You don't know that.
But I don't, I don't think that our own attorneys should be investigating ourselves.
That's entirely up to you.
Well, I I understand that, but do you, do you see the problem with it? Because then the next time, like for instance, and I'll, God love Phil, I'm gonna pick on him a little bit, but I'm not picking on Phil. But when Autumn got investigated, Trune Law Firm did, attempted or did the interview, okay? And they, they gave a response that there were no policy violations, which is great. A few weeks later, she was at, her and Mister Melky were asked to provide some documents. And we go back to Trune to ask them legal questions for those two. But a month before that, they were investigating her. That would be like me having, hiring the prosecutor the next time I needed a defense attorney. You, you, I, I guess my problem with what's going on here with the two law firms that we're talking about, and I'm not saying you guys are good or bad, I think you should recuse yourself from things because there is a, there's, there's a personal connection here.
I will say that I work and my loyalty has always been, and I've been very clear with anybody that I talk to. I work for the Board of Education. The Board of Education is not a single board member, it is the board. And the board directs my work. It uh informs me what they want me to do, and I do it and I serve at your pleasure. If you wanted to fire me tonight, you could fire me.
Do you know Jim on the board? Does someone direct you?
That's because the board, but not that I I apologize, I should, I shouldn't be answering a question of the, uh but I will say that your policy is the one that authorizes the superintendent to work with your attorneys. You could not. It it would be, your policy is consistent with the practice of every single school district in Michigan because you could not operate. If you had to call a meeting with eighteen hours' notice, if, for example, there was a accusation of inappropriate touching by a teacher, God forbid, um, you know, that has to be addressed and and the superintendent needs to be able to get legal advice immediately. Now, obviously, they, the superintendent would then notify the board of what was going on, but they need, you know, legal advice right, right away. They couldn't wait eighteen hours.
And I totally agree with that, and I have a problem with Jim calling you guys. That, that's, that's perfectly fine. To function, that has to happen. I agree. However, some of this communication, when it involves a board member, should be communicated to the entire board by either the board president and or the superintendent or Dave. You know, there, there should, there should be some communication here. But.
Yeah, for you to say that you, you represent the board, but only one person up here had any knowledge that this was taking place, kind of seems.
That's a choice that's, that's above my pay grade.
That's, that's not his fault.
Well, yeah, I get that, yeah.
All of that belongs to you.
Who invited him today?
I get that, sorry.
I don't know.
Well, I invited him today because he's on the agenda. I invited Trune today because.
Yeah, they're both, they're both on the agenda.
And I introduced Dullaport the night that he was here. I will say that there are times, for example, if the board is going to be a decision maker. So for example, a tenure case, the Board of Education has to by law make certain decisions. So there are times when we try to limit information only because there can be a due process violation, a substantive due process violation, if the board receives information that is not shared with the employee. So we're very, we try to be very careful. We try to give as much information as we can, but there are times when, in order to avoid a constitutional violation, we do limit the information that's shared. That doesn't mean that the board won't know that there's some issue going on and be alerted to the fact that there's, for example, a potential tenure matter coming for them. But when it comes to the details, uh there are times when we have to be careful with what we should.
Again, I agree, that's not the, that's not the issue here. The issue here is, is there's a formal, there's some form of a formal complaint made against somebody up here on, on two different occasions. And none of us are aware of it, and it obviously isn't a secret because those same board members come back and tell us. You know, Mister Melky goes, hey, man, I, you know, I'm using my terminology, not his. I got a hate gram in the mail today. You know, so it's, it, none of this is a secret. But yet, and and again, this isn't your problem. We'll correct it here, but we're not, my concern with you and Trune is, at the end of the day, we're gonna come back and have to work with you. I'm pretty sure Mrs. Henry isn't exactly think that folks from Trune are peaches and cream, and Mister Melky, when this is done, probably is not going to be that fond of you. So we're ruining relationships with our own attorneys while you're investigating. I really think, and again, we'll address it in the policy, that we hire a third party to do any board investigations. It only makes sense. It's like having a mother, you know, investigate her child. I I I bet I can find a hundred and some teachers that would disagree with that and and seven or eight principals. Because they're probably not going to find their child guilty of anything. Well, that, you know, so there's the problem we have. But, okay, I, like I say, but yes, if you ever do get invited again and 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 maybe we, maybe we have been told, maybe we haven't, but I did wonder, because I knew who you were, and you sat there silent. And I had no idea you were here, and I still really don't know why you were here because I don't know what knowledge, and you said it yourself, I don't know what knowledge you really had of the Morse sale. You said it yourself, you didn't have much information on it, correct?
That is correct, and that was part of the reason to be here was to get an understanding of what was going on. I can't advise you if I don't even have a basic understanding of, of, you know, the issue. I have to have at least some understanding.
We had contracts that we could have sent you, and you could have read it, because I mean, that's all we did with Trune. We gave him copies of the contract and, you know, Phil went through and cleaned him up some and made him a little more favorable to us. So, I mean, you, you could have, you could have been done the same. There was nothing you were gonna learn here that night. None of us generated those contracts. All we did was sit and read them as well. There, there was, there was nothing from the seven of us that was gonna enlighten you besides our personal opinion.
We'd already squashed it. So to be here for the Morse Road project is almost a, it's a laugh.
On August thirteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
We hadn't squashed it.
Well, not in saying we squashed the deal, but we set, set up subcommittees, other committees to do things. We said we would start over, so it's almost laughable because Trune had been through the whole thing prior for the eight or nine months that we didn't know about as a board. And so to bring him in on that premises, to me, is laughable here. I, I mean, I'm not gonna, you talk about a smell test, not buying that. Because it, it makes no sense. They were here all, they were, they were in negotiations or at least knew about what was going on at some point back in May slash April. Why would you bring him in in August? I mean, we can't refer to our background anymore, Ken, but you know, me being a police officer many moons, that makes no sense when the guy says, no, I wasn't at the house. And we got a picture.
I want to be very clear. I'm, I'm an old.
I'm being very clear to you, sir.
I, I'm an old, I'm an old soldier and my integrity matters to me.
I'm not saying, it's not you. It's not you, sir. It's what's going up here, what we're told.
Well, I still, yeah, I'm ready to move on. I've, I've heard, I mean, if everybody else is.
So, so real quick, we'll move on from that topic. In reference to that unfolding, um, I'm not gonna beat the proverbial dead horse. I hopefully no one even has anything to say about it. But we did this, we did this same process with uh Mrs. Henry. And then our last board meeting, we found out through emails and FOIA's and everything else that three board members, two of the three went to an undisclosed meeting. Um, my, my, my issue with this is, is, and we just, and we keep finding out, we're particular board members, pretty much the majority of us are left in the dark. When, when you have an invitation and you only invite three of the board members, that's not how this goes. And, and, and again, a lot of these things are co-signed by previous superintendent, the current superintendent and the board president. They have, they have knowledge of them and they're aware of them. And, you know, the, the meeting that was the secret squirrel one, I, I, I'm taking Jim out of that. I don't know what Jim knew and didn't know, but we had a different leader at that time, and I'll put that person that they're blamed for or responsible, blame responsible. But again, nobody come back and refer, you know, said anything to the entire board. And, and you allowed people to sit here in the dark.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little, um, I don't know, OCD. Okay, so that was under board member review, right? The, the last comments. But, um, I didn't hear much from board members on that, right? So are we gonna allow them to ask questions again and then back to your point, which I kind of zoned out on because?
Are you asking if we can ask questions about the charges against?
Oh, no.
No.
Uh. Yeah, I'm just mixing up, I'm just getting mixed up from the agenda, and I think it's just.
The agenda, the agenda, obviously, we're, we're to the point where we're, we're, we're being left in the dark by our board president. I'm not saying that she's not doing her job right or wrong in reference to bringing these investigations, you know, but again, we're, we're left, we're left in the dark with it and, and other investigations are, are ignored. And we're picking and choosing which ones we're going to uh go, go after or follow up. Um, at least this one, at least this one may have a little bit of reasonable to it because it was an employee that felt slighted or whatever. Um, but in Miss Henry's case, the, the one didn't even have a name in it, as I brought up the last time, and I don't want to beat the same dead horse, but it had no name in it. And then we come back and it was, well, she did a, she did a, a talk, whatever, a talk show, a podcast. Well, when you look at Trune's investigation, that was never considered as evidence. So how could we have got to Mrs. Henry or Miss Henry if it was never presented as evidence? And if it was presented as evidence, Trune never put it in there. Only thing we got as evidence was an email. And it has no one's name in it. Don't have it with me, but that one has no one's name in it. But yet, Autumn was named the culprit in it. And when we, when we confronted that, it come back to the podcast. Well, the podcast was never put in the, in the uh ruling or findings by Trune that the podcast was ever considered, so how could you have found that was, this is Henry? Again, it was directed by somebody. And, and the only two people that spoke to Trune was through Jim and Carrie, uh Carrie.
I just want to bring up the fact that that was one, and then Jim admitted to opening an investigation on me, which he's got no authority to do so, or, or consulting the attorney for a possible conflict. Um, investigating that. And also, hang on, I'm still going. Um, and then for the board member review, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna jump backwards a minute. Um, Jenny read a policy about um the steps for investigations that the board president's duties are. I don't remember that number, but I would, if you still have it up, the part to uh suspend while investigation is pending or in the process, I just want to know what that says and why it wasn't considered. So I guess that's a question for Carrie. I would like to review up that, but, well, I mean, Jenny, get the policy then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, um, yeah, that, that was Ken.
Oh, sorry about that.
I guess, I think I don't know which one it was, but no.
It was, uh, it's twenty-four oh six, board officer's duties. It's not, it's uh under A six. Accept complaints, coordinate investigations into allegations of misconduct against board members and the superintendent, including placing the superintendent on a non-disciplinary or paid administrative leave during the pending investigation. Is that what you were referring to? Okay, that has to do with the superintendent, not the board.
Right. I'm just, yeah, for the investigation that we started with Williams.
Oh, yeah, if you wanna.
I just want to know.
Well, let's finish this topic.
Okay, okay.
And if you want to come to, and then I'd like to hit these real quick, because otherwise they're not gonna take nearly as long. But I, again, I don't know if these, I don't know if these things are intentional, you can never prove it, but I don't also believe in coincidences, and we have too many coincidences of, of things that are kept from the board. And, and we seem to decide to investigate what we want to investigate. Um, we, we've had, we've had emails, we've had uh FOIA disputes, the pay, the cost of them filed by citizens that have been, to my knowledge, ignored. I don't know. But I, I believe the grievance process for that is that it goes to the board president and then that dollar value is brought to the board to deem whether it's reasonable or unreasonable. We have not had anything brought to the board. We've not had anything presented by the board, and we know there's at least one email of just arguing about the cost of the FOIA. So again, we're, we're going down the same path, and we're not, we're not changing our behavior because there's no reason to.
Mister Clark, are you here? Thank you. Could you speak to that, please, about the appeal of a FOIA?
Why don't we ever hear from you? Why do we keep bringing attorneys up?
The board policy doesn't allow for uh fee appeals to go before the board. The board policy allows for uh appeals as to the request denial, but, but not to the fees. Now, there's an avenue, if, if the requesting party wants to go to circuit court, you know, they could do that, but the policy doesn't allow for appeals on, on FOIA fees.
But policy number, I'm, I, I don't know, would it be?
It's in the FOIA procedures and guidelines. I believe it's thirty-five hundred.
Okay. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, so I'll, I don't know if we're just open for comment right now about this topic, but I'll say that I'm definitely, you know, obviously I'm newer to the role on here, but just looking at the um, application of the investigation process, it does not seem fair and balanced. Um, it seems like allegations, um, about conduct of particular people are met with the full extent of legal options while other, um, complaints are not handled the same way. They're ignored, they're, um, not, not taken seriously. And so I have real issue with the fact that it doesn't seem like it's equal application of investigation or any other action. So do you have any comment for that? Do you wanna, you don't have to. I was just, that's just an observation. Okay.
I've asked several times for Josh Davis's complaints to be looked into. I've asked him at board meetings and I've sent emails to Carrie. And there's been really nothing sent back to me in almost twelve to thirteen months, except for the last few weeks, I think she may have replied in an email to me, but it doesn't say we're gonna do anything for a gentleman that has some serious issues and there's some validity to his, and he does not get any treatment. And if we're gonna keep treating people unfair in Schwartz Creek, um, or slighting some people and not others, um, it's not good for our board.
So Chuck, what I'm hearing you say, excuse me, I'm talking. Um, what I'm hearing you say is that every single time someone raises an issue from the public, we are to initiate an investigation that will cost us additional dollars, which seems to be an issue that is being raised on this agenda. Far be it from me to understand all of it on here because nobody shared it with us.
I have another one. But you, you sent a lot, a letter from the attorney to Josh to tell him to be quiet. But you paid money for that, but you won't look into it.
There was no money paid for that and I sent that.
Oh.
Yes, that was me. That was me.
Yeah, I thought he did it on his own.
He, he didn't charge me. I don't know why you keep twisting this. When you ask me, he didn't charge us. That means he's doing it on his own. You're twisting it into something-
We don't pay him at all?
Too constantly.
And that's not a conflict?
Chuck's little sister and little brother, and it's ridiculous.
That's rude.
Ridiculous. That's what he said last, last meeting. He said that.
Yikes.
Yeah, let's, yeah, no personal attacks or personal comments. I know, I, I understand where-
You call liars, people out in the audience are saying it, but when I try to pull truth, it's no, you know, don't be offensive.
Well, i- if you don't like it when people do it to you, then-
I have been very good about not doing it. I've been very good. I've been bang up with the twisting that's been taking place in this community over and over, the lies that he knows he's telling. And nobody, the board doesn't ever step up and say he shouldn't do that. We call him little sister and little brother. That's it. I, I can, you knew eight days-
Carrie, are you gonna just like call order or no? No? Okay, let's check in. Was that sarcastic?
A question though, in, in Jim, and I understand if Mr. Delaporte didn't charge, that's fine. However, how do we pick and choose when he's gonna charge and not charge? You, hang on, let me finish. But I, I looked at some of the bills you sent me and yes, you, you're absolutely right. Mr. Delaporte sometimes does, sometimes doesn't. But one would have to assume, we should never assume, but one would have to assume, I don't know too many attorneys that work for free. And, and, and if, and if that's the case, I, I don't think in the future we should accept any charity from any of our attorneys because it again makes a bad picture for us that if they're going to do something free for this, but then they're gonna charge for something else, that's not a good look. It looks like there's favoritism or, or something. So moving forward, I, I don't think we should take any anything free from the attorneys. I think whatever they charge an hour is what we should pay them. Because that's not a good look. That, that, it, it almost, you know, it almost looks like we're in cahoots with them. And I'm not saying we are, but it's not a good appearance.
Or maybe bring him because he's not charging us.
Yeah, so, you know, moving forward, no more freebies.
Or he owed you something.
We pay, we pay for, we pay for their services. Um, because I, I don't, I know a lot of attorneys in my profession and I'll tell you right now, I don't think hardly any of them ever work for free.
For eighteen months, because we haven't had an invoice in eighteen months.
Well, that's, and, and that's, and that's another topic I was gonna address is you were kind enough, or Jamie, I don't know which one of you did it, but you sent me the attorney bills for Mr. uh, Delaporte for the last two years. And, and that, but we don't ever see the bills. Not, not, not this detailed, but something I did find amusing with these bill, the billing is even if I got this bill and I read it, again, it's kind of entertaining. Phone call, emails, phone call, prepare interviews, travel interviews, mileage, courtesy discount, Delaporte, phone call, prepare interviews, research, travel, mileage, phone calls, review evidence, review correspondence, emails, 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 Zoom meeting. People, or excuse me, prepare for interviews for research, mileage, courtesy discount, no charge, no charge. Ten emails, phone call, edit documents for review. You know what I don't know? I have no idea what Mr. Delaporte was working at. That's why I read them. I didn't wanna bore you guys.
Should be on there.
I have no idea what Mr. Delaporte's working on.
The case number.
He, he could be doing anything. And so to me, for a description, I have no idea what was described. What, what was the topic? Was the topic the bond? Was the topic Morris? Was the, there should be something in here, at least a name for an association.
Mr. Delaporte, did you wanna explain your invoices or your payments?
The, the disadvantage to working for a public entity is that your bills are FOI-able. And at the same time, we have to keep our client confidentiality. That is why the bills themselves are fairly abbreviated and they don't mention names or cases because if I were to do so and they were to be FOIA'd, then uh, either you've gotta spend a lot of money redacting it or I have broken, you know, there's a breach of confidentiality. That's why they're abbreviated.
Sure, yeah, that's-
I am always available to answer any questions anybody has about the bill and they go to your superintendent, who is my primary contact when I'm not, you know, being directed directly by the board uh, to review. The, uh-
How could he possibly, how could he possibly review that?
Because he was a part of what was going on. He was-
You don't want me to hand this to Jim and ask, and ask him what this is all about?
That was when Rod was superintendent, so he would've known.
But how?
Cause he was in the midst of it. But we're missing the point.
I am more than happy to provide extreme detail on your, uh, the bills that are available to the public if you want me to. I am more than happy.
Every, every bill should be in the public because if it has anything to do with the public interest should be in there unless it deals with an employee or somebody's name. That is privileged, correct? And that has any, so if you're working on Morris Elementary, why would that have to not have a name on there? And we've already established, Ken, that they have a personal relationship because he does things for these two for free. Let me just, so that's my problem right there. You just admitted to it.
That is incorrect.
You just said he do things for you for free.
I do that for all my clients. I've done it for a long time. The reason I didn't charge you for the, whatever, the eighteenth or whatever date it was, is I didn't feel that I provided any benefit to the board and therefore I did not charge you. And I also didn't charge you for the letter because it is a fairly stock letter and it took me about twenty minutes. And I always, for every district that I do, we give out, you know, courtesy discounts. Now, that has not come in on a bill yet because we have not, it's not been time for our bill, but when the bill comes, you will see that it just say standard courtesy discount, just like it has been on almost every single bill that you can, and I bet every single bill that you pull will have a courtesy discount. I do that for the clients. I also charge way less than I charge for a, uh, a regular client. Okay, why? Because you're a school district and it's the public money and I go out of my way to not, you know, charge my usual rate, which would almost double what I charge, uh, or, or, uh, increase it by fifty percent.
You're, you're, you're very, you're very forthcoming on the bill. What, but, but what I'm asking here is when we look at this, if we were ever given it, is we have no idea what we're paying. If it could be, um, student expulsion hearing. You don't have to name the student. You're not, you're not, you're not violating any trust things there. It's, it's what it is.
Yes, that particular period of time was all one matter uh, that we were handling involving a teacher.
Okay, and that's, and that's fine, but, but if the bills actually came to the board, we're clueless. And, and if, and if, if you put up with this, if you put teacher investigation, that's not harming anything.
You know how we wouldn't be clueless is if our board president communicated what she was contacting the attorney for, or he, like, if the board president-
And, and you did hit the nail on the head. This is public money. So if they do wanna FOIA, God love them, let them. I, I mean, it would be kinda silly, but if, if they wanna know how much the school district's spending on attorney fees each month, FOIA it.
That information is on there. That's-
But I mean, but I mean, why would I look at this bill? Because everything I would, and since we said this was during Rod's deal, so I would have to ask Rod, what, what is it?
Or you could ask me and I am-
Well, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call you, man. You charge by the hour. That's, that's, that's a joke. I'm trying to leave a little humor in the room, but, but I mean, all kidding aside, if you did read this bill, it makes no sense to anybody except two people, apparently. The superintendent and, and you.
Eric, how long did you spend on that tenure case?
Hundreds and hundreds of hours.
But it wa, it was made, made incorrectly, please, twenty, twenty-three through twenty-four?
Uh, that sounds correct, yes.
Which we were able to be successful. Um, and I am grateful to Mr. Delaporte for his expertise in, uh, representing us in that case.
We're not saying he missp, misspent the money. We're saying that even when you look at that, you're clueless what the money was spent on. No one is saying that he charged too much. No one's saying he missed, you guys, the, the board or the superintendent misspent the money. No one's making that accusation. The accusation is when you pick up a document, you should be able to understand what it is. And if you, and if the, if a board member can't understand it, how blind are you leaving the public? If they, if they did FOIA it, if you read that, you'd feel like you were village idiot when you got done. You got no idea what you just read. I didn't. I only printed, I got a whole bunch of bills and I just printed one section of them and I looked at them. And I didn't know any more than when I started. What I did learn is he charges different hourly rates and he does some things for free. That's what I learned. But if I picked this up and, and Jim just said it best, well, you'd have to ask Rod. Rod's not here. So we should be able to take this document and understand it if Rod's not here and we can't. We have no idea. Well, if Mr. Delaporte, God loving, has a mishap, dies or is in a coma, well, I've got no one to ask. Rod might not return my phone call and Mr. Delaporte can't talk. So a document should be understandable by not only the public, but the board members. That, that, there's an issue with this. We can try to sugarcoat it and round it all we want. No one is saying it's misusing funds. I think his rates are perfectly reasonable. He charged, you know, that, that's not the topic. The topic is, I got a document and I have no idea what that document has. If I handed it to any one of them, they're gonna look at it and go, huh, that's an interesting bill.
So Eric, what would be the process or, um, the answer to his question? Just contact you or your office?
If they have any questions on any of the bills, they can contact, uh, me or my office. Uh, in addition, from this point forward, I will ensure that as much detail as possible is placed on those bills.
Thank you, that's-
And I appreciate that.
That's sufficient.
It would be like if any of you folks out there got a consumer's bill and they didn't tell you how much natural gas or kilowatt you used last month, but they just threw a number down. You, you would be calling consumers energy, hey, man, this thing went up a hundred dollars, but it didn't tell me how much fuel I used. You know, you, you wouldn't do your life blind at home and I don't think we should do our life blind here.
I would also ask, cause looking, cause I did look through the bills and it looks like my interpretation of it with two different rates happening on the same days is you had two different people working on this at some point?
On different, uh, aspects of it, but yes.
So it would show two different people. Yeah, so maybe include some initials or something like that so we can differentiate. Cause that, I believe that that might've been some of the difference in rates is it might've been like yourself working on something and then maybe an associate working on something. So yeah, maybe just put initials as well, just so we can understand why there's two rates for the, or two charges for the same day for the same amount of work kinda thing, just to help us, if you can do that to you.
I apologize. I thought that was on the bill. I'll have to talk to my accountant, but, um, that's not a problem. We can do that. Uh, the rates for the various, whether it be a senior associate, junior associate, uh, law clerk, all those rates are in that perspective that was handed out to you today.
I, I was able to piece it together eventually, but it took me a minute because I'm looking at them side by side. I'm like, why are we paying for the same, you know, the, the same amount of time on the same day, but one rate, one at one ninety, you know, one, at one rate, one in a different, why, what's going on? And it finally clicked, okay, the, these are bills for two different individuals. That's why they're different rates. That's why they're happening at the same time. So that would help us kinda interpret these bills as well, if you can incorporate that too. Thank you.
Well, I have a question about that because I don't even see a contract from Mr. Delaporte.
He doesn't have one.
Okay, so-
I don't charge a retainer. I'm an, I'm an as needed attorney and you passed a resolution accepting our rates.
So the, okay, I get that, but the last time there was no expiration date on the last time that it was gonna be an agreement?
Most attorneys just work until one of you gets sick of the other one. I mean, to keep it simple.
Okay.
I haven't changed-
Am I lying? Guys, true. I mean, basically, if you're tired of me, you're gonna go, hey, it's been nice. And if I'm tired of you, that's been, hey, it's been nice, right? Yeah, there's, there's, either party can walk away at any time to keep it simple for like, someone simple like me. But that's what most attorneys do.
Okay.
But we wanna move on now to the next thing and, and I think these will be a little quicker. I think we've addressed it issues with Trune and, and Mr. Delaporte. We've talked about it at length. Maybe we've got some things. We also have a third party, uh, uh, excuse me, a, a third attorney. Jim, you told me that and I, I apologize, I forgot. What was that firm?
Collins and Blaha.
Okay.
Use them basically for, uh, evaluation and presentations.
That's fine. I just, I'd forgotten the names. So down the road, if, if, if the board is unhappy with this, I guess someone can make a motion and see if it's second and have a vote. Um, you know, I mean, that, we, we discussed that. Other question on number seven, the attorney's paperwork for Attorney Williams, has that been signed? And been forwarded to him? Okay, great.
Yes, it was sent to Mr. Milkie on the twenty-third of October and eight days later I got it forwarded to me. And I, um, was out of town when I came to it on Monday. It was signed, sent to Mr. Williams. I am talking to him tomorrow, having a conversation. Um, and so yes, I completed that task.
Okay, thank you.
For what? I thought that the point people were Jenny and Ken on that one.
He requested, because I signed the agreement to discuss with me tomorrow. I do not know what is on his list of, of, or if it's just introductory. He reached out to me because I responded to him.
From an email? He asked for that meeting?
Like, yes, I have it in an email, but I've already communicated back to him and he said he was available tomorrow afternoon. So we're talking then. And you have copies of the representation agreement that was signed on the, on Monday or Tuesday, on Tuesday, very late actually, about 12:30 in the morning. So.
Yeah, I just, okay.
So just moving through that, the rest of that agenda really quick. If, if at any point in time, you now understand the agreements, the board members do. If you wanted, if you want to go with a different attorney, that's obviously your prerogative.
Yeah.
And, and you can do it today, you can do it in six weeks, but.
Beacon of attorneys, I'd like, I'd like an attorney.
Well, I apologize.
Yeah, and I would like to remove.
I would like an attorney to.
That's something, that's something that I wanted to bring up is during this investigation, um, being this, being this, all these allegations remain white, while Chuck was serving as a board member. Um, I, I think, I think that, I think the district should be responsible for, uh, retaining Mr. Melkey, attorney, whoever he would choose. I know he spoke to one. Um, cause there, the, the allegations are made during his, his service here. I, I'm sorry, Chuck, I forgot.
And just curious, because we're being investigated by Kendall Williams, can we also get attorneys? I mean, the accusations happened during my time here in the district.
Make the request.
You're not a board member though.
No, I'm an employee.
Yeah, an employee.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
An employee.
Yeah.
Yes. Not sure what we're doing.
Okay. Me either.
Um, I don't care one way or the other.
There's been no accusations by the investigator.
The, the, the problem, the problem I have with Chuck's, the problem I have with Chuck's deal was when we're, we, we went way beyond like compared to Autumn's. Hers was policy violations. Policy violations have no real issues with it. But when you're talking about civil rights violations and then turning it around, it, um, what all titles did you say? Six, seven and nine?
Correct. I did.
Yeah. So there, there was, there was a little difference, but if you want to discuss that with, uh, Carrie and or the board or whatever, can bring it, that's fine too. I, I, I'm only one vote, but I, I don't care if you discuss it with us. No. And that was, and that was discussion that Chuck and I did have when, when he told me about this letter. Because there is a little more serious accusations here.
Yeah. So I would do a, I want to do a motion saying that we do allow Chuck to retain, um, an attorney at the district's expense in order to make sure that he is protected in, um, you know, in the service of the community on the board. Um, because that's, it was, as he was acting as board member. Um, so I believe that he's entitled to that assistance. So that's my motion is that the district's, um, allow Chuck to retain an attorney at his, you know, whoever he chooses in order to deal with this allegation.
I would second, well.
I would support that. So I have Jenny and Autumn, Kim.
Yeah.
So I, I have a question, comments and questions. Um, I have a question about any limits on that.
A dollar threshold?
Yes.
How much was the investigation? Did you get an estimate for that? Did you get an estimate for how much the investigation would cost? Carrie, when you opened this investigation?
No, that's not part of my responsibility. It's to refer it.
Okay. So no, I wouldn't say you need one.
Well, you know, I'm so happy that you know everything.
Well, that's what the time to ask question. Let's, yeah, let's not do, let's, not personal.
There's a motion on.
So there's a more motion and my question is, should we include limits before we go any further?
I am open to that. I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I apologize. So do you have a, do you have an idea, Chuck? Do you have any idea what it might be?
I trust that Chuck is responsible, but.
I have no idea. I'm not going to hire Lee F. Bailey to come in here or anything. I'm going to hire a local attorney that deals with schools.
So I would say, so I was, or my idea would be this, we authorized up to 25,000 for the investigation. Let's say we temporarily authorize that. And if there's some, if there's another limit that seems more reasonable, once you've retained an attorney, um, bring it back to us and we can, if, if it needs to be revisited, we can revisit it. Or if there's a lower amount, if there's, if you guys feel there's, we should set a lower threshold and then if he exceeds that, if he comes back and lets us know why.
Yeah, I, I trust that he's not going to go crazy.
I do too, but I, I want to be fair. So I don't know, I don't know if we would always give a blank check to anybody. So let's just, I, I agree with the, the practice of setting a limit.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the limit would be.
Jenny, you made, you made the motion. Autumn, you had seconded that. Are you okay with that change?
So are we going to say 25,000 and then if he needs more, he needs to reapproach or do you want it lower?
I believe point of order, Kim seconded it.
Yeah. Yes. So are we going to say twenty, just 25,000 for now? Or do we want to put it lower?
I'm fine with whatever.
Chuck, I mean, I'm kind of looking at Chuck.
I'm abstaining from it because it affects me and I, to be more professional and to be non-biased, I'm not going to probably even vote on it. I don't know if that's proper or not, but I'm going to stay out of it.
Does anybody else have an issue with 25? I, I'm picking a number out of thin air. So please, if you have another idea.
And I'm going to, I'm going to round, I'm going to round up a hair here. But looking at our attorney bills, which Mr. Delaporte said that he was very reasonable for a school district. We're, I'm, I'm assuming he is the higher amount on here, 195. So we'll just, for easy math, we'll round to 200. Uh, every five hours would be a grand. So I think, I think maybe we come back and start at $10,000. It'd be a little more reasonable for a threshold and.
Do we know how long this is going to take though? Even, I mean, the, so.
We can just come back to it.
Okay.
He can come back. Yeah, let us know. Yeah.
We can come back to it.
Okay. So your recommendation is 10,000, Ken?
I, I would think, I would think that's fair.
Okay. I would agree with that. Or I'm okay with that. All right.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Jermaine?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
I'll abstain.
Jenny Walgast?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Six yes.
Then I would also like to discuss having, if, uh, Mr. Delaporte doesn't want to recuse himself from the investigation. I also don't think that that is very unbiased. But that, I don't know how everybody else feels, but considering he was here at, and yeah. In history with the district, in Trune and what have you, anything else I might learn before I leave here today?
So do you have a suggestion or an, or how do you, what do you propose?
Well, that we remove Delaporte from the investigation and hire a non-biased third party who isn't already on the district's payroll.
Are we able to, I don't know who it would be. The only answer to that is if they started it, are we able to switch attorneys midstream and have somebody else take over?
And, and the change would be based on what?
Kind of like Eric just. Yeah, conflict of interest because he could potentially be a witness if he was present at the time that the, the harassment occurred. You know, I would feel better if you, if it was somebody that was not present in the room when it happened.
And, and you're assuming that that's related to that. So.
Yeah, he had, nobody's provided details about dates and times, so we just have to kind of make assumptions. Yeah.
I think the other part of it is what I said is, is we, we can't expect Mr. Delaporte or Trune Law Firm, which we'll, we'll pick on poor Phil again, but if Phil's doing an investigation on one of us one minute and then another minute we're sitting with him, you know, it makes for an uncomfortable situation. Same, same thing there. So if, if we're going to have these investigations, I think we should find a third party. They can recommend somebody. I don't have a problem with that either, either, either party. But as long as it's not their law firms, because it, it's difficult, it's difficult to sit in a room with someone you just picked a fight with. You know, I mean, we have, we have people here that don't want to talk to each other because we have spats up here. And then a day or two later, we're still mad at each other. So what same difference, if I got a guy sitting across the table from me, blasting me with questions, trying to, trying to nail me with whatever violation it is. And then that same person comes in the room for a tenure hearing or employee, employee discipline or whatever it is. I don't want to talk to them. Obviously, we don't even want to talk to each other. So let's, let's, let's be honest. Maybe, maybe, you know, Mr. Delaporte or someone can recommend who could be a third party for that. I don't care. But it, it shouldn't be him for two reasons. One, he was sitting here and he could be a potential witness. And two, we're obviously by the, by the bill, we're going to work with the man again unless we get rid of him. So let's assume for this moment, we're not getting rid of him. You know, he, no one, no one wants to host, hostility, especially when we're, we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the district. But I'm too busy, I'm too busy shooting him dirty lips across the table because, you know, two months ago he was beating me up.
So if I may, Eric, could you provide an associate who would do the investigation who was not present here?
Did I make a motion? Did you support it?
I can. However, uh, the rules, the ethical rules typically indicate that if somebody is disqualified, that the entire firm is disqualified.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
This is not an ethical disqualification by any means. Um, so it's up to the board.
Yeah, I vote that motion.
And, and, and to be very clear, not ever, not even insinuating that, Eric, not insinuating that at all. Just that we do business with you and, and, and it's tough for us then to sit and talk to you if we're not, no, we're still mad at you from two months ago or whatever. That, that's it.
I understand.
Try to keep, try to keep us all on the same side.
I think it's fair to say that Eric, you can bill us for the time you've spent on the investigation so far, if you had not intended to do that. Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion again. Remove Delaporte from the investigation because it's a conflict.
I would second that, yeah.
I can.
Any comments or questions?
If, if the board wishes, I can send you a list of people who, uh, you know, do this type of work.
I don't think.
Okay. Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Jenny Walgast?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Melkey?
I'll abstain.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine?
Yes, with the understanding that Mr. Delaporte is able to bill for the work that he's invested up to this point. Okay.
Right. They don't look out for each other.
Are we at board comments?
No.
Public comments, I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on. Yes. All right. Are we doing public? If you'd like to address the board, please step forward, state your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
So I submitted my own FOIA request and I decided to see what Rod was doing the last month before he left. I received an interesting email that I would like to present to the board. I have an email that I FOIA'd, by FOIA'd a bunch of emails that I'm going to present to the board. I have a few extras for anybody else that would like them. My name is Crystal Mata, M A T A. Some of these are a little concerning what is in this email. Um, I'm just going to point out a few of them. One of them is, uh, Mr. Melkey told a Schwartz Creek student who was job shadowing him that Asians drop like wet noodles when you shoot them. Uh, Mr. Melkey has publicly stated his desire for vaping punishment for students and adults and then was caught on two occasions in central office break room. It's against board policy. On October 30th, Mr. Melkey said he would like to see Jessica Lanave in a bathing suit and asked if she wanted to swim naked in his pool. He also offered Saran Wrap to cover. Um, this conver, conversation happened on a public board subcommittee. There are, another one is during a conversation in November of 2024, Mr. Melkey told Mr. Heatherton and Mr. Kitchen that a couple of people had been going off campus pre-marriage to have sex and that it was okay. He guessed because so-and-so must have big dicks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Mata. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Gerald Roberts. I'm a veteran. I've lived in the school district for over 50 years. What I'm seeing tonight is a public lynching. Certain people don't like Mr. Melkey. Nor do they like Ms. Henry. Those two people have brought transparency to this particular school board. If Mr. Melkey wouldn't have talked and spoke up and before they had the state investigative committee name certain people that are on this board with regard to an investigation investigating them. I saw a big change between the president as the way she seemed to be quieted down and Mr. Melkey could then in turn speak. I think there's a lot of people here going through the same thing that we're going through in Monday Township. There was hatred in Monday Township for people that were trying to stop the mega site. I see some of that hatred coming out here in this school board meeting, trying to lynch somebody. Mr. Melkey, I commend you. Ms. Henry, I commend you for speaking up for the residents of this particular community and trying to keep transparency within our school board system. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Do, do you want to reset that clock? I don't want to lose no time. It's precious. So my name is Jennifer Staton. I'm a Monday Township resident. I'm a Schwartz Creek school base taxpayer. It's my business to come here, much like it is everybody's business here behind me. I don't know if any of you are aware, but this afternoon at noon, there was an announcement made by the House of Representatives. The House of Representatives is offering a bill to the House of Representatives immediately to revoke, suspend and complete. to revoke, suspend and completely abolish the M E D C. I've been working on this for years. And I am thankful. I am so happy. I am so glad. Next is the MSF Board. I think it's a shame, I have that recording on a recorder of when Mr. Melkey made that comment and he misspoke. And I believe right after he made it, he corrected himself. I have it on a recorder. I can play it. I also have on a recorder after a board meeting, when one of your board members and another member were standing up behind your board and there were slanderous comments made at Mr. Melkey. And I have that on record and that will be coming out. I also have stated up here in front of your board that a FOIA request that I received was supposed to be in total. It's not in total. There's several pages that were omitted from the copy I received. Where's that complaint? I stated that during a board meeting. Where's that complaint? You pick and choose what you want to do, much like Monday Township, they pick and choose what they want to do. But you know what? The money from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation is shut off.
Anyone else?
This is just another example tonight of, uh, you know, selective enforcement of some of these rules. Uh, I just got to ask again, Andrea Fick has admitted to breaking rules, uh, especially when it concerns OMA. I, I provided you with the text messages, text messages her and Holly were making while a vote was taking place when Holly wasn't here. And you chose not to do, not only not do anything about it, you would never even acknowledge that I sent it to you. Multiple times I asked for updates, nothing is ever done. She ripped up a document in front of both of you. You guys laughed about it. After I told her I would be FOIA'd requesting it, you did nothing about it. Like, so this is just another example, like, of, uh, the attacks going on here and your, your lack of, um, enforcing the rules with, you know, for everybody the same. I'm disgusted by it. The sooner you, you become, the sooner you're taken out of your role as president, the happier I'll be. And the sooner this investigation with Chuck is over, the also the happier I'll be because that guy sticks, sits up here, puts his, sticks his neck out defending the kids, voting for, I don't think you've ever voted no for anything that was beneficial to anybody for the school. Uh, I, I'd stand up with Chuck beside him for anything because I just think that, uh, he deserves that. I want to talk just a second about the lawyer back there who sent me a letter, not unpaid. Trying to silence me basically without any example of what I said, much like Chuck's where we don't know who it is, what happened. I get a letter, just telling me to erase my post, not just what I, not just the part that's where bad, they want the whole thing erased. And then an apology for what I said, but again, I don't know what, what they're pointing to. I don't know what he's, what he's even talking about. So what, what, what is my, why, why would I, why would you expect me to erase anything without telling me what was bad? Questioning, questioning your ethics? That's not defam- defamatory. I'm asking questions. Right? I mean, I, I'd love to hear one lie that you, you claim I've said. Cause I backed up everything with facts, everything. Well, then indulge me. Tell me what, what I lied about to him. I'm using him right now. I'm talking to you, looking at you, addressing you personally. What did I say? Tell me one lie. I'm asking. It's your chance. I'm going to give you this floor right now. I'll give you part of my three minutes. One lie, just one. Just tell me what I said. Yeah. Carrie, why, why won't you take any of my claims? Why won't you acknowledge them? Any complaints?
Can we talk about after a meeting when you rushed the board table aggressively?
Oh, no, 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 no. This is my time. I'll interrupt you if I want to. This is my time. I rushed the door because I couldn't stand to hear you talk anymore. That's what I did. So go ahead, tell, lie again about how I rushed the board. Yes, I said, I said, uh, you know, I made a vulgar statement as I walked out the door. I didn't rush the board. But you, you want to put your spin on it? Go ahead. Headphone when you're not president.
I wasn't planning on talking today. My name is Marion Schaefer. I came to this amazing district two years ago. My mom was diagnosed with ovarian cancer. I had to make a very difficult decision to move across the state to take care of her. I was very selective in the district I chose to teach in. I only have three minutes. I have bus nap land. But here's what I will let this share with you. I chose Schwartz Creek School. Because of what? I chose Schwartz Creek Schools because of what I saw here and what I felt here. I spent 24 years at another district. I was moving. I chose Schwartz Creek Schools. You want to know why? Because I felt the community. Jim Kitchen took time out of his day to walk my daughter and myself around this district. He took the time to make sure that I was making the right choice for my family. I was choosing a community. And what I'm seeing is breaking my heart. I left a district that was in dismay. I saw the discord that the, my district that I was leaving. I wasn't leaving for my district. Break my, hurt then. We're here for the kids. We're here for a community. Please stop pitting each other against each other. Cause that's what I'm seeing here and that's not the district I chose to work in. I love these kids. I love. This is, this is, I'm going to get sick because I'm so bored. I walked through those doors the day that I was being announced to this amazing school district. And you know what I came to? I came to Jim and Rod lighting up and seeing my face walk through that door. I knew I was home. Can we not forget that? Do we not forget why we're here? We're here for the kids. We're here for each other. And that's not what I've experienced. I do not want to walk down the same road that I did in my last district. Thirteen elementary teachers quit because of the discord on the scoreboard. It was not a nice experience to follow through. I saw the unraveling of that district. I was already gone, a year out removed. But I did see it. Can we be very careful? Please be very careful and be very conscious of why you're choosing to investigate this or investigate that or investigate. Can we just be very careful and come back to the district that we love? Because that's why we're here for each other and for goodness sake, the beautiful children that we serve in this community. Thank you.
Haley Lloyd, Schwartz Creek resident. I wasn't going to get up and speak either. But, um, I just wanted to remind everybody that Jim Kitchen is not this community. He moved here. He wasn't born here. He said he was from an industrial area. He doesn't care if the mega site comes in and destroys our area. Um, my family's been in Schwartz Creek for a hundred years. My parents live on the mega site where they're trying to bully my parents out of town. And Jim Kitchen's going to be leaving soon. And the people actually that have been in this community for a really long time are the ones bringing transparency to keep the community what it is and where, why you came to this community. Because of our community. If the mega site comes in, it's going to destroy that. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Charlotte Savage. I don't live in Schwartz Creek, but I have children that attend Schwartz Creek School Districts because they live with their grandparents. It amazes me that you guys are up here arguing about Mr. Chuck. Um, I can think of a few words that we could use towards him, but calling him racist, a man that has given me a hug outside and has sat and had two hour conversations with me. Y'all gonna sit up here and call him racist? Prejudice? Yeah, I'm even prejudiced. Even maybe a bigot. I'm a bigot also. Do you agree with everything everybody has to say in their point of views? No, we don't. So calling him racist is not the proper term for that. Um, and then we are sitting, you guys are up here like kindergartners. I literally fell asleep listening to this. And then to have this ignoramus back here. Okay, to even be justified to even call himself a lawyer, but can't give you any logical answers. My nine-year-old son could have gave better answers. Then I don't even know what y'all called that man back there, but I'm gonna stop calling him names because I got a few of them and they ain't too polite. Um, I'm gonna keep saying this. I ain't the brightest crayon in the box. Might be the darkest one in there, but, um, at this particular point, my, I mean, like right now, I might be shining brighter than every single last one of y'all. Y'all get up here and y'all talk cash money shit about these two people right here. But at the end of the day, they give you black and white. There's no gray shaded area. Everybody else wants to give you a gray shaded area. What if, oh, but this could, what if, if was a fifth, we'd all be drunk, but we're not. We're dealing in reality. And for some reason, it's like y'all are in a surreal life or something and y'all think that this is like Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory or something. It's not. Okay? We are living it and y'all are playing. Okay? And when apparently kids start signing up to play grown folks games, then the grown folks have to take it to the big leagues and then we have to really start giving BTA to the children that don't want to act like adults and play adult games. Like, what are we doing? Let's tighten this up.
Hi, guys. This is, all, all looks so familiar to me. Look at what this mega site has done to us. It kills me too. I mean, I look across the street and my neighbors, it's, where, where have they gone? It's just, it's dark. The families, the love across the street is just, they're just buildings now. They're just, there's no light coming from my neighbors anymore. And that's just the beginning, the small portion of it. I mean, this has been torturing to us in the community for two years. Um, that's why I ran and I wanted to be a voice for my neighbors. And this to me, I, this is lawfare. And this is not checks and balances. This is not, I mean, a lot of this is common sense. I mean, the ten commandments. You know, thou shalt not have false witness against thy neighbor. Um, love thy neighbor. Don't come into my community and destroy my community, my neighbors li- living places and beyond. It goes throughout the county, actually. It's the water. You know, the, the water crisis. Um, the powers that be here, we have a president that apparently picks and chooses with the lawfare and I, I just think that there's, there's a problem. It's, it's almost like abuse of power and I think you guys are going to have to make a motion to rearrange your power structure where there's trust. I mean, we are the Board of Trustees, school trustees. Where's the trust? Uh, you guys need to really figure out how to, just as well as we do in Monday Township, we have to correct some of our policies and make it so that it's more fair for the residents and the parents and the kids. This non-government organization coming in and dictating and rushing and causing us to go against one another is evil. And I just want to praise the Lord for what we have here with the failing of the $40 million sellout. It's just ridiculous. And I love all of you and I just want us all to do the right thing. Even myself. Pray, pray for us. Pray for, that we all do the right thing for the community and the people and each other. And it's hard. It's harsh. I know.
God bless America. Hi, Priyan Wilson. I'll keep it short because I know we're tired. Um, I've, I've noticed a lot of time has been spent in this room talking about, oh, we, we should do things this way or we should do it that way. Um, and I believe Ken was the one that floated, hey, in, in policy meeting, we should be changing this. And, uh, I fully support that if, if a group like this is not happy with how procedures are done and there's nothing in the policy that clarifies those procedures. Um, please, please make some policies because, um, I think the same conversations have been had a lot. And, uh, we could solve those issues just with adding some policies that are clear and let us know how things should be going on. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Priyan.
Hello, Don Ludwig, Monday Township, Maple Avenue. Um, thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Autumn. Thank you, Ken, for today. Um, a lot of insights today, but, uh, the reason why I'm talking is about Tyler Ross Messler. He's the reason that mo- most of these boards are flipped upside down. I'm going to give you a quick example. It's happening to my house right next door. I contacted them, let them know, you know, that I was having some water issues with our home and, um, we just received an email from the school district that the proposal was turned down and Tyler's going to be a good neighbor to, to Morse. Well, just so everybody's aware, him being a good neighbor, they had wetland violations last April. Just so everybody's aware, today I was notified by Eagle. They, um, they're not being good neighbors because I'm only seven doors down from school. They tore down a home and they didn't even have their permit. They had a 10-day waiting period. They tore down the home on the 14th. It was actually Jamie Collins' home. They tore that down on the 14th. They had to wait until the 21st. So the Eagle came out to test the air quality and the home is already leveled. Basement filled in, so there's nothing to test. It's gone. That's not being a good neighbor. So when you do have your meetings with Tyler and all that, just remember this, this has started from this mega site. I mean, you know, I'm going to say what Leah just said. I love all you guys. I mean, hopefully one day we're all past this and we can all get along. Um, and get these guys out of our town and move forward, but, uh, they're not good neighbors. So just keep that in mind when they're tearing homes down around the school, please. Thank you.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that is correct. That, that.
Yes, that was, that's correct. They did tear the home down next door to me while school was in session, seven doors down. Um, they, they had water, maybe 25 minutes out there and they ran out and they just kept doing what they had to do. I mean, I do have the videos on my phone too. Or if you, I don't even know if I posted them on the Facebook, um, you know, machinery flying right by my bedroom window. You know, my daughter's bedroom window. I'm sure everybody knows about the camera. Um, that's not being a good neighbor. So, thank you.
Yeah. They can just keep going on.
Anyone else?
Debbie Bush, Schwartz Creek resident, Hill Road. I was pretty surprised tonight by tonight's meeting. I guess the last thing I ever expected was for board members to turn on each other. Chuck has been the one board member that has really gone out of his way to show where there's been wrongdoing in our district. And I find it odd that some of the questions Amber has asked have been hard questions. All of a sudden Amber's being investigated. We're spending money on lawyers. Chuck's making some pretty bold statements. And now, within a few weeks, some of the people that he's directing. And now, within a few weeks, some of the people that he's directing his questions to have been able to come up with a pretty serious investigation. Out of this board, there are several of you that I definitely uh, like your comments. But out of this board, I, there are a few that I do question. Even though your intentions may have been great in the beginning, right now, no. I have never heard, in the time that I've known Chuck, to ever once say so much as a cuss word. Must less any derogatory comments in a sexual sense, in a racial sense, or anything that's negatory towards any single person in this room. He has always been professional and respectful. And it just always amazes me how all of a sudden we get an email. And we got an email, you know what? We're gonna go after this one. And his career and judgment is questioned. How sad that that type of power that is given to certain people can be utilized in that direction. I, I, I think it's shameful. I think out of respect for another board member, you should have been courteous enough to say, Chuck, we got this email. I don't care what your policy's saying. You've gotta have a, a dignity between each of you to do, in order to gain respect, you gotta give respect. And the, and I just cannot believe that the two people who are your most strong-spoken are the two people you've gone out of your way to make their job tougher. Well Chuck, you stand strong because you've got this community behind you. And I will be forever acting to support you and Amber or whatever because I'm ashamed of this. I'm embarrassed by it and you should be too.
My name is Donna McManus. I live on Morse Road, Schwartz Creek. And I just want to say, how can anybody sit there and try to deny and knock Chuck in the head? Because you're not going to succeed, Chuck. He's known throughout this, this place around Schwartz Creek for years. There's not a thing he wouldn't take his, empty his pocket to help the poorest man out there either. And I don't care what you people say, that is rude. He does not deserve you talking like that against him. He has not been swearing at anybody. I've never heard him swear on that board. And I've come to claim a few. I don't usually come to your board meetings. Number one, I don't think it's unfair. I don't think at all. There's two things that I think should be gone and I'd like to see it one day.
Anyone else?
I just got a little word of advice for Chuck with all those uh, accused, by the way, that M debt, uh, you don't got funding to sell your school no more. Steve Caro don't play. I love that guy. God bless him. Anyway, uh, Chuck, with all these allegations, I mean, that sounds like a lot of criminal stuff. I think we should get some of that junk right there on the record. Because then we could be falsifying evidence if that's the case, things of that nature, and there could be repercussions for that. That's it.
Alright. Okay.
My name is Chris Hall. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but um, first of all, to the public, as Ken said earlier, this is their meeting. When it's public comment time, you can talk. When it's not, be quiet. Everybody's talking when they're talking. You're not supposed to. That's not, that's not how this works. And second to the community, the board turned down the offer for the school. That's in the can. So if you got problems with the mega site, go talk to the people who deal with it. The school board no longer deals with the mega site. It's not their problem. It's not their problem anymore. So, all of those comments and, and you, and you, and you are, it's your right to have those concerns and you can hate it all you want, but just take it out of here because they're done with it. So it's a waste of their time for you to keep coming here and mega site, mega site, mega site, that's enough. It's a waste of time. And just one more thing on that mega site. I wanna thank Ken for asking a question to last meeting, making everybody put their cards on the table. Because he said, would you be willing to sell that school at any price? And two of you said no. And there's no school district-centric reason for you to not even entertain an offer. So then you have agendas beyond what's important to the school district. You have your own agendas. And that's, that's fine, but it, it, you're not serving the school district then. So then you might want to take your efforts elsewhere because if you're gonna make school board decisions that, that aren't beneficial to the school district, then you've got your own agenda. And that's, that's not, that's not why you're here. That's not why you're on the board. Um, and just lastly, um, Jim Kitchen has been a part of this district for fifteen years now, fifteen years. And everywhere he's gone, all he's done is built positive communities at the schools that he's been involved with. That's, 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 that can bring on a good learning experience for students. And um, just the, the constant throwing accusations at him, just, just one after another. Uh, it's, it's ridiculous and, and you just can't throw those things out there like that. And there should be repercussions for it. Thank you.
Sorry, can I help you?
Are you gonna call order?
Mr. Jones, you have the floor.
Actually, the board president's supposed to be the keeper of the, yeah, to call order. So.
I just told Mr. Jones we had the floor.
Okay.
Thank you. I, 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 I don't know, Mr. Mr. Hall here, I'm following him. I don't really have a whole lot to say, but I, I will say that somebody here said that they were, uh, I think they said they were embarrassed. There are people on this board who certainly embarrass me. There are people on this board who talk about transparency. There are people who talk about, we need to treat everyone the same. But yet, when it comes to them, they, eh, well, maybe we won't do this because, well, I know what our, our, our uh, rules say, our board rules, your, your board rules say, one, you should know your board rules. Um, but you know, we're, we're constantly having to be reminded, uh, well, this board rule says. I know people don't know everything. I, I've, I've had a couple careers and I don't know everything about it, but I know generally what's there, what I'm supposed to be doing, what my rules and parameters are. I'm pretty sure there's a whole lot of people that don't know. So we've got someone here who has no clue, for the most part, what's going on unless her boyfriend told her. We have this gentleman here who I, you know, hell, I voted for him. I voted for him to be up on that board because I saw him go after uh, something about air conditioning at the high school. And I was like, that guy, that guy's looking out for our money. But then when you look into him, you find out Gaines Township bounced him out. He's been recalled from Gaines Township. He had a longstanding lawsuit against uh, Clayton Township because somehow he thought, he thought, this wise man thought that he was appointed for life as police chief there. That's, that's kinda odd. Ma'am, I, I'm sure you're a nice person. I've actually met your son. I'm sure you're great. You're a little bit out of your depth here. You, I'm not too sure about, but I do know that Wollgas Construction is a big place and, and I'd really like to know if you're involved at all. Okay, there you go. No friends, no relatives, no nothing.
Husband, like, long, long in the past, family split, absolutely no relation whatsoever. I don't know a single one of them.
Okay, fair enough. And, and you know, thank you for responding. You'll never hear that from me again because I just wanted to know. Um, Mr. Angle, now we come to you. I'm sure that after your trip to Traverse City last, last week or two weeks ago, whenever we were here last, um, I'm, I'm sure you heard that I had a little bit of issue with your, your Facebook nonsense about teachers. I don't think that you should be on a board where you come in with preconceived notions that basically the entire reason you're here is, is a scam. And, and that's, that's a little bit weird. Another thing while we're talking about, uh...
Anyone else? If not, we're going to move on.
I, I wasn't gonna speak either. My name's Lorraine Ahern. I live in Clayton Township. Um, it's been a long time coming, but I just want you to know that I appreciate those of you that are asking questions. Um, like I said, it's been a long time coming and I appreciate all of those questions.
Alright. One last call. Alright, uh, let's move on to uh, board comments.
I have a couple comments I'd like to make. Um, the first thing I wanna say is, um, this email we were just given by the lady out there, um, I'm seeing one of these things says, during a conversation with the board president, Mr. Melkey stated that he did not like his grandkids because they were Mexican. Now, I have on many occasions heard Chuck talk about his grandkids and I can't imagine that he would ever say anything like this. This particularly bothers me because we're talking about his grandkids here. Um, the other thing, I'm gonna go back a little bit. Um, I know we're done with the mega site, but we, there was three of us, we know, there was three of us that weren't invited to a meeting that took place. Three of us were. Three, but three of us were not even aware of it. Um, Carrie, I guess when I asked you why you didn't share that information with the board, you said, well, Rod asked you not to. Mr. Kitchen, Rod was your boss. He is not your boss. You had a right, you had an obligation to share that information with us because he's not your boss. It's quite the other way around. You should've informed him that this is not right to keep this information from the rest of the board members. I don't even know what the purpose of that was, but I just had to get that out there. I never really did hear an explanation of why, why three board members were excluded from that meeting. So I don't know if there's an explanation or not.
I, I did not create the invitation for that. Um, it came from Tyler. So I, I can't address it, Kim. I don't know why, who was invited and why.
But you did tell me that Mr. Kid, Mr. um, Heatherton asked you not to share that information. That's what you said at the last board meeting.
Yeah, that still doesn't stop you from sharing it with the rest of the board, right?
You should've instructed him because he works for us. You should've instructed him that.
I did ask Mr. Heatherton when he was going to bring this to the board. Consistently, he was waiting for additional information for a proposal, which everybody sitting here is aware of.
I think your question is, why didn't you though? Like, why were you taking lead from Mr. Heatherton? Is that what you mean, Kim? Like?
Yeah, it's like you were being, taking direction from him when he should've been taking direction from you.
Right.
I mean, I, we, you know, he works, he worked for us.
Yeah.
Why didn't Jim tell us? Jim wouldn't have known whether or not he reported it to you or not. How would I have known whether he sent you an email or told you about? I wouldn't have known. Well, because we weren't on the invite that you were on. So you know that four board members were excluded.
But I didn't know that he didn't come back and follow up with you. I don't know that. You had one on ones or some of you did. I wouldn't have known whether it was.
It's great that Kim brought that up because the private discussion about potential sale and use of school property is intended to influence future board action or support. Then it raises questions of a walking forum or constructive OMA violation. Where small means are held to circumvent public deliberation, which is they did. Where it's Michigan had found this completely to be improper and effectively, and effectively allows the board to deliberate outside of public view, which some of our board members do. Even if it's not a complete illegal OMA, it's most certainly a breach of government's protocol fiduciary duty. Some people say, why am I keep bringing it up? Because when somebody breaks the law, we just don't like, okay, they broke it and they're gone or, you know, they're here and let's just move on. And I know a few board members here want me to move it on, especially the teachers, because we've talked about school of choice. And I'm gonna stay on this subject right here. And this is according to Michigan Associate School Board. It's absolutely prohibited. The board president's role is to preside at meetings, not to act as an agent for the board in negotiations, site visits, discussions about properties unless specifically authorized by a board vote. So if the president met privately with potential buyers, did not discuss the meeting at the board and only reviewed it after a FOIA request. So I was up here, so a lot of you have selective memory because I was here at a meeting on four occasions and I looked right down the board. What does anybody know about this? And they all sat silent or said they didn't know anything. And the only reason they came up for a FOIA request. After we did the original FOIA request. So if you guys want those types of people working, oh, that's a bad word to say, Chuck. It's not. It's the truth. It's the truth. I've tried to show the evidence to everybody. I work off of evidence. And that's what it is. It's a, it, it's against, it's a, it's a walking forum. Informal board authorization should've been done or at least they should've notified the board. And they, they forgot to notify the board because they didn't blame it all on Rod who's now gone.
Chuck, how, how do you see that as a walking forum? There were three board members who were invited. I did not create the invitation list and one of them, one of them defined.
For example, like, super set to gather information, outside groups to press the vote to present and the secretary makes it appear that outside parties at the board was being represented. Tyler, then I'm gonna clarify that report back can easily be tirched out as misrepresentation and overreach of authority. The, the, the potential businesses or negotiations about district assets, I'm just bringing it up, as Kim brought up, the president failed to disclose it, especially after a FOIA request. That's the only way we've ever found out about it. Is that what the, is that what the district wants? I mean, some people can laugh at me or say he's crazy. Is that what you want? Stuff kept from the board, their own board members? And they say, why is there such discord? I wouldn't have discord if people would've just told me the truth to begin with. I've been asking the same thing for four months. And there is rule violations and potential law violations. You know it and the other attorneys know it. It's just that it can't be presented because it's squashed all the time. It's squashed all the time on that. And I know you can smile about it. And this, this lady that came up, I'm not gonna address this. There's like thirty complaints against me. I can only talk about one. I have four grandbabies. Three are Asian, one's Mexican. And I said that I shoot Asians like wet noodles. Come on, even if you don't like me, that is horrendous. People are lying. I have three Asian grandbabies. And I have a Mexican, a, a, a mixed race grandkid. That's what you guys are gonna resort to? That's what you resorted to? I, I can go through all these, but I'm not going to. I don't know where the lady was at that said that. I, I'm glad you're proud of it. You're proud of it, aren't you? Well, you were very proud to come up here and start stating them and
Spreading it.
You can smile about killing my Asian grandbabies. That, that, that's, that is
Who was smiling?
You were, you're just grinning.
Are you kidding me?
I am kidding. Yeah, no, I'm not. So with that being said, that's, yeah, the teachers can laugh because they're here because they're mad because I called them out about the grades. We have one of the lowest proficiency rates in the district for a school of like size. I, I don't, why are you mad at me? Because I call out the truth, some of you. I, I don't get that. You said you voted for me. I'm reporting what I'm finding to you.
These are quiet emails, Chuck. If you're gonna
FOIA emails. I'm not addressing anybody. I'm addressing the entire crowd.
Carrie, are we gonna keep order?
So, and the other one is, you know, I, I'm not gonna say what race she is, but she's a mixed race. So, um, I'm gonna reserve my board comments. I'm sorry I commented on your comment, Kim, because I'm not gonna go into these thirty complaints. But it, it's, it's ridiculous that you would say that I would shoot Asians. And this is gonna be
I did not say that, Chuck. I did not document this information.
Mr. Heatherton did.
Yeah, this is...
I mean, that's abs, you guys are something else. I'm up here trying to do what's right and you're gonna talk about I'm killing Asians and Hispanic people. And it just so happens, that's how little you know about me. Them are my grandbabies. That, that's, that is, that is just, you should be ashamed of yourselves for that.
Yep.
Who are you talking to, Chuck?
I, I'm talking as a general comment off of Kim. You know what? I'll make a motion that we dismiss you as president again, based on the information I just received. I just received. We know that happened. This is not...
But Chuck, I'm gonna save you some time here and I'm gonna have us out of here in about three minutes. I am going to resign as president right now and good luck. And I am going to read this into the record.
We're gonna just read all this stuff.
I'm going to read this into the record. Autumn and Chuck, I want to clarify that now, like you two, I don't have to meet with the superintendent monthly for updates and the opportunity to ask questions and become informed. That's a question. I don't need to attend all the committee and board meetings, especially to monitor your behavior and your treatment of our talented and committed staff. I don't need to spend six to eight hours preparing for meetings each month and then attending all of the meetings that are taking place in this district. My husband and I, my wonderful husband and I, can now make plans without regard for the board and school calendar, including attending the school and student events and to the Schwartz Creek Community Schools family. Regardless of my role on this board, I am committed and will remain so to our students, their families, and amazing staff who support them on their journey to success. And I challenge my fellow board members to look in the mirror and ask yourself, "Why am I here?" And to all of our educators in the audience, God bless you for what you do every day and the amount of care that you bring to the, the workplace every day. And, and for that, I am very grateful to you. So, yes, Chuck, I, I, I am not stupid. I'm, I'm not a stupid woman. And when I get a very cryptic agenda and you don't let one of our board members attend when she is supporting a person in grief, it's, it's just inexcusable. And there are charges behind what you received tonight that we cannot share with the public. Am I correct, Mr. Dellaport?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alright.
I thought you didn't know anything.
Yeah, right? You just said you had no idea.
This, this is my issue, guys. Even if you don't like it, he just said that. I don't worry about it. Now you don't.
It's okay. You're not in charge anymore.
Nobody knows nothing until we extract the truth.
Right. If I misunderstood the question, I apologize. I understood that somebody had made a charge. The answer is yes, period. That's, but we don't share that. If the respondent chooses to share it, that is up to them.
You asked him the question.
I would also, yeah, so, so I, I would like to nominate Jenny Wollgast as the next president.
So, a policy which you don't know, right? What does the policy say for that? We have a policy for that. So, what happens?
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Melkey, you're going to attend all the meetings with, um, our superintendent?
Yeah.
It is for me to worry about because I know how much effort and care goes into sitting in this...
You worry about it before resigning?
Excuse me. I know how much. And even with all of your harassment and your threatening behavior, I have remained committed to this. And I will. I'll show up. But you aren't gonna get the me and you should all be very worried about what steps in my place. Because only a short period of time is gonna tell you.
Okay, well, so Chuck, I mean, Ca, Carrie's resigned. Policies say that you are now acting, are you two weeks?
Only, only to January.
Okay.
Only to January.
Then we'd have to appoint...
And I would, um, only to January because we, we, the policy says we reappoint in January. In the spirit of what's going on with this investigation, well, first, we have to accept Carrie's resignation, according to board policies, so, or parliamentary procedure. Have a roll call vote, accepting Carrie's resignation.
Is someone gonna support or have a motion?
It's, it's really not, it's not a, it's not a motion. She stated it. Does anybody object to it?
You should still have a motion.
Does anybody object?
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion that we accept Carrie's resignation.
Second it.
Yeah.
Let me make, clarify resignation as president, not from the board of officials.
I apologize, yes.
State, state that. You.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept, yeah, so I make a motion that we accept, um, Carrie's resignation as the role of president on the board.
I'll second that.
Okay. Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Jenny Wollgast?
Yes.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, so now, we would appoint a vice?
Yep. I'm gonna take a motion and appoint a vice president.
Yeah, so we can all go through, so here, we can all go through and nominate somebody. So, if you have somebody you'd like to nominate, you say their name out loud. Then when we do the roll call, when she calls your name, you don't say yes or no. You say the name of the person that you choose and then generally the person with the most names.
I make a motion that we...
Or do you make a motion or do you want to nominate?
We can, we can, I can nominate him. It's, it's not gonna matter. We nominate Ken Engel as, uh, vice president.
Alright.
So, Carrie said she nominated Jenny, correct?
No. Oh, as...
Yes, as vice president.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear that motion.
And now Chuck is saying Ken.
No.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, okay. Would you want me to go through?
I'll withdraw my motion and you go ahead.
Well, she didn't make the motion to nominate Jenny for that.
Oh, for president. I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Right?
We have a motion to nominate Ken Engel as vice president. We go through the vote. Is there a second for her?
I'll support.
For. Roll call vote, sue.
So, unless somebody else wanted to nominate somebody else.
Because if he gets majority, yeah.
Well, no, no, no. Normally, normally when you do it, they do, you gotta, uh, all the names go into the hat and then the person, then the roll call isn't a yes/no roll call. And who gets the most, it's a say the name roll call.
Is there a second for Jenny?
There wouldn't be a, there's not a first yet. She was nominated for...
She was nominated, I thought, like...
She was nominated for president.
Yeah.
Not vice president.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If someone wants to nominate for vice president, feel free, but she was nominated for president.
I will nominate Jenny Wollgast as vice president.
Okay, so we'll have a vote first on Ken.
Well, no, the roll call, you say Ken or Jenny. The roll call, you say one...
We've not done that before.
I know, but that's how it's supposed to be done.
Go through roll call.
Okay.
And you, you've gotta pick Jenny or me.
What do we do?
You couldn't... You guys also have, yeah, the opportunity to, to say that you don't want to be nominated for something like that's a, like... I know that I nominated Kim for something one time. She's like, "No, I don't want to do that." So, her name didn't...
Either one of you in decline, they, they...
That was in January, Kim, sorry.
Either one of you in decline?
I'll let her all.
I'll decline.
Yeah, okay. Okay, roll call vote for Jenny to confirm it. Carrie was the original, I believe. Kim was the, uh, second to it.
Yes. Okay. Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Andrea Fick? Oh, my bad. Chuck Melkey?
Yes.
Jenny Wollgast?
Abstain, sorry.
Ken Engel?
Yes.
I, I don't think that's...
Congratulations.
No, I'm sorry.
Any other board comment?
I, I have one. Just the topics come up multiple times on the mystery site. Someone reposted my post. May be clear what my post was for those of you who didn't have the opportunity to read it. I gotta give you a little history with it. At the top of my post, I put down, "Those who can't do, teach." That clause was given to me when I was about twenty-one or twenty-two years old. I coached a women's softball team out in the Kersley area. And I joked about it because I was a horrible baseball player. Did pretty good in church softball, but sucked at baseball. So, the joke became, "Those who can't do," in this case, "coached." I've always used that in many different forums, not just teachers. So, I stumbled across a meme and it said something to the effect of about believing in education. I realized there was a problem when my gym teacher was fat and my business teacher never owned a business. It was a joke. You know what I made jokes about today? Today's National Donut Day, for those of you who don't know. But seriously, you know who likes donuts? Cops. Guess who's a cop? Today, I got multiple pictures munching on two donuts. They're jokes, people. They're jokes. If you're offended, I apologize. But today, I referred to the great big boxes of donuts that were brought into the teachers lounge at Linden High School. I stood over it and got my picture taken and said, "I'm at the bait pile." It's a joke. Smile. Have a sense of humor. I made fun of myself, my own profession. Heaven forbid. That's what's being referred to. If I offended anyone in the teaching community, I apologize. But it was a joke. And I bet you, as teachers and administrators, you often make fun of yourselves. It's what we do in our professions to survive. You know, not that you want to know my resume, but for two and a half years at the city of Flint, I investigated sexual assaults and assaults against kids. And for another two and a half years, I investigated homicides. Probably two of the most depressing things you can do. But you know what? You, you get through it and you get through it by sometimes making fun of yourself or other things. People lose their mind. So, if I offended anyone in the teaching community, I apologize. And if I offended our good fine officer over here cracking a donut joke up here, I apologize to you. Hope you had a donut today, though. You're stale tomorrow. I'll bring you one, though.
Any additional board comment?
Um, I'll make a comment. Um, so, thank you, Carrie. I know that it was difficult for you to make that decision and I appreciate that, that you did that. Um, I'm hoping, so again, we all want to move forward. We all want to focus on the kids. We've, we've had a great victory in the fact that we're not currently having to deal with Moorish and the sale of Moorish and whatever. It's not, it isn't going away. Um, that, that land is still owned by an organization that has torn down houses. They're, they're gonna want their money. They didn't do that. They don't want, they're not in the business owning land, so it's not over with. So, you know, and so we, as a board, definitely need to be able to, to work together and trust that we're, we're all on the same team. Um, and, and, you know, I'm hoping, you know, we're not trying to punish anybody. We just want to make sure that everybody's feeling like they're being heard and we're all on the same team and we're working towards the same goals. And hopefully, we can move on. That, that's the biggest goal. So, we have some unfinished business. We do have to tidy up some stuff. Hopefully, we can get it done as quickly and as cheaply as possible. We obviously want to take everybody's concerns seriously, um, not just the concerns about Chuck. Um, all the concerns that are brought to us. There shouldn't be any favoritism. There shouldn't be any, anything. And so, we're just gonna, we just, all we can do right now is move forward and try to be as fair and equal as, as possible. Um, so, and transparent, exactly. So, I definitely appreciate you, Carrie. Um, and, yeah, we're just gonna, we're all gonna try to move forward. So, thank you.
Yeah. Um, did we have a talk about notifying parents for lockdowns or threats or what have you a few months ago? Does anybody remember when the parents came in here and talked about not being notified?
That would be addressed to you, Jim.
Like...
Yes, we sent out notification that we found contraband and, yes, they were informed.
Yeah, I did it. Well, that was, this was back on the St. Mary's deal, dugout deal.
Yeah, last year.
Yes. Well, oh, no, I wasn't here last year.
It has. Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, okay, so wasn't, weren't promises made about communicating with parents about issues? Because I know that kids have phones. When they hear lockdown, I'm sure they aren't given all the details because, you know, but they do get the detail that they're in the lockdown and when they notify their parents, I don't know. I know that I wouldn't be having a good day if I got a text from my kid saying that their school is on lockdown and I haven't heard anything from the school. So, I thought that back then it was promised or, I don't know, told that there was gonna be better communication for that and it was gonna, yeah.
Sam responded that real quick? Okay, or?
Yeah.
Are you talking about specifically today by chance?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I, I think today, looking back on that, I know Jim was coming back from a, a meeting. We had two separate incidents, one at the VLC, one at the high school. And I don't think we did communicate that out today, but it was an extremely busy day. So, apologies there. We, we can coordinate that. I know two of the high school administrators that weren't dealing directly with the incident at the high school were traveling with the families affected by the incident. So, uh, we'll, we'll redouble our efforts and make sure that we get that communication out.
Don't we have a communication job? Like, isn't there a job?
Well...
Was it, is it just cover social media? Like, I don't...
Well, yeah, when it gets to that, that level of what needs to go out, yeah, we, we use her, but we send her the message crafted for a specific purpose to make sure that the information is correct. We didn't do that today, so. Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's, just wanted to address the parents that I spoke with today, so.
Anybody else?
Just to piggyback on that, and again, not that I'm extremely knowledgeable about it, but for about eighteen months at the city of Flint, I did do our Public Information Officer position. And, and if we are going to have that position, I, I, I do think it needs to be more of a a used resource. And I don't, I don't know how you guys will do it, but, uh, you know, to take a phone call to her, seconds. And then she can distribute it whatever way you want. Or, I mean, you can talk into a text and, and send that message to her through a text. I mean, it...
A template.
Those are, those are, th, those are pretty simple measures to get, to get the first wave. It, it's like I always say, on a scale from one to ten, your first comment should be up, up to maybe a three. Because one, you don't want to disclose bad information and you just want to make people aware of something. Then the next time you talk about it, if you, or you, or if you're done with it, then go to the ten. If you're not, bump it up to maybe the six. But if, if you watch, if you watch anyone that does that well on TV, they always, they, they're always holding something back. So, the next time when they say, "Whoa, we're back in two hours to give you more information." Well, you may not have new information. Well, you may not have new information in two hours. They did a pretty decent job, Bill Rennie out at Grand Blake Township, they did a pretty decent job with that out there. But like I say, that, that's something that, if, if you're going to have that position, it should probably be utilized a little more, and I, and I mean, you guys can, you funneled it to us, you know, and I, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus by saying that, because we do appreciate know, knowing what's going on, so that if someone from the community does call us, we don't look like the village idiots. No, but in the same breath, let that same information, while it's being passed along, and maybe that's something you guys sit down and discuss with Michelle, to what degree you want to let what out. You know, here's what I'm telling you, Michelle, but stop here. Just get something out that we, we've had a mishap, whatever that mishap would be.
Yeah, so there's like a checklist that you follow, because, and I know that not all of them are considered lockdowns, because I think that was kind of like a point of whatever last time was that it wasn't actually locked down, it was.
Shelter in place.
Shelter in place, yeah. So obviously, I mean, you guys have checklists for what happens and what events. One of those checklist items should be some kind of notification to parents, just a canned message. It doesn't even have to have any details, just at the moment, you know, the high school's experiencing a shelter in place, we'll provide additional information when we can.
Or, okay, this is my thing, like, how they also said that it was like, I mean, I'm sure it's way more complicated than I'm going to make it sound, but like a tiered system, like, I'm going to call it red, yellow, green light, you know? And I thought we talked about what kind of threat it was, like, because as a parent, if my kid is in that school, and if they shut down, if there's a shooter or a, any, God forbid, I want to know, and I want to get my kid home. Like, versus, and I'm not trying to, I'm sympathetic with medical emergencies, don't get me wrong, but a medical emergency, I know that my kid isn't in harm. Like, you know, it's, they're just doing it for the privacy of the student. You don't need to say their name, you don't need to release any HIPAA for, but just medical, so I know I don't have to storm the gates, I guess. And, yeah, I'd just like to see it broken out, and if it's easier to make a policy and give you a template saying, here's what you do in a medical emergency, you just shoot out medical lockdown or medical what have you, like.
Yeah, and even if it's communicated to the parents, these are the situations that warrant a complete lockdown. These are the situations that warrant a shelter in place, just so that they're aware of what those different things mean, and that, oh, this is a situation where, yeah, don't even come to the schools, we're not letting anybody out the doors. Or, you know, different things like that, just so they know what to expect too, because they don't want to be calling out everybody and tying up the phone lines. They just want quick information and know what to do.
We, we had time to do that today, and I forgot. As soon as you started talking about it, I'm like, we missed that step, and that, it's on a checklist, we've got it, it just, we were, we all responded physically. I knew the notification went to you guys, I forgot to redouble and check. Couple weeks ago, we had a similar situation. The, the high school principal communicated out to the parents, we knew that was covered. I didn't check with her, she was traveling, and I forgot to double back, so that is a miss, we'll get it, we'll get a handle.
One, one quick question, how are the kids doing? The one that had the medical emergency and the one that was, without mentioning names, assaulted or fight?
When she left, she was, she wasn't, she was conscious.
Okay. But did we follow up at the hospital?
No, I didn't.
I have not. Maybe you can get us a report tomorrow and send it out to the board members?
Yes.
And then what about the person that had the medical emergency? Was there one that also passed out? Something happened?
That's the one I was referencing.
I'm talking about the one that got in a fight today.
Yeah, that's the one I thought you were talking about, that's what I was referencing.
There was two separate incidents.
Yeah, the one, one at the VLC, there was follow up with the administration, but I don't have a detail for you.
Well, I never got response back.
Okay, I, I can follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay.